Let's open this meeting at 6:34. And oops, Alan wants to come in. Alan in, and at the same time, we will just welcome everybody to another Zoom meeting made possible by the COVID-19 virus and our Governor Ned Lamont. Doing our best to try to make sure everybody can continue to participate. And when we get to Audience of Citizens, maybe we'll talk a little bit more about that. See how we can do, maybe do a little bit different and better. But anyways, meeting's open. Call meeting to order at 6:34. The first item is to approve the minutes from a regular meeting held on July 14th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 14th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Any conversation?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Somebody else in the room? And the next item on the agenda is our guests that come to us once a month. Scott Martinson and Sherri Carlson from Connecticut River Area Health District to give us a COVID-19 update. Scott, Sherri?
Sure, thanks Angus. Yeah, community-wide Deep River, we're still doing fantastic, which is excellent. Still 18 cases. We did get four cases in Hattam over the past week. Little bit concerning, so we're keeping an eye on that. However, Sherri can let you know in a bit. A lot of these still have ties to healthcare and/or law enforcement in some cases. So, you know, we're not seeing any outbreaks like you may be seeing on the news and on other parts of the country. But it's still concerning because we're starting to see more cases in Connecticut as we did a week or so ago. And also the positivity rate's starting to go up. And I just looked at today's data. It looks like they added, it's up to 35 states now on the travel ban. That's also very concerning because that's a decent metric to see what's happening throughout the country. So that's, that's not good news. But you know, we just keep plugging away and we're going to have to see what happens. You know, the, the age is decreasing to 17 to about 24. You know, so that it's just amazing, this disease. Everyone thought, no, the young, no, no. But we're finding that's not the case. So all this, as it heads into school reopenings, really creates a lot of challenges. Not only for our community, but every community. I can't even fathom how they're going to be able to do this in Florida, Texas, Minnesota. And we're one of the best states in the country. It's going to be extremely difficult, but you know, we're trying to stay vigilant. We noticed, you know, mask are getting a little complacent out there. Businesses, everyone's getting antsy, they want to move on. But you know, this is a marathon. We're not close to done, you know? The only good metric out there right now is the fact that a vaccine may be here before we know it. But that said, you're still looking into, you know, the latter end of 2021. So people got to bank on wearing masks, social distancing for probably another eight months to a year. And that's hard for people to swallow. It's going to be very, very challenging out there. So you know, we gotta do what we can as a community, you know? What do you got, Sherri?
Well, the, some good news is that, you know, the latest findings from the CDC are that we're not seeing any recurrent of infection of over 90 days. So since the beginning of people getting positive, they have not seen anybody get reinfected. We still don't know the length of time that we get immunity for. They also changed some of the guidance for taking people out of isolation is still 10 days. Because that's how long it can be extrapolated and grow out into an infectious disease. But now you only have to be without a fever for 24 hours and an improvement in symptoms for 24 hours. So that's a decrease as well. Still a lot of confusion with thinking that with the travel ban, they could come in, be tested and not have to be at that 14-day quarantine, but that's not true. They can still convert from wherever they were that whole time. Getting a lot of calls from daycares where people are coming, going on vacation, even by car. And then having to be told that their kids have to stay out for the 14 days. So.
Yeah, there's. Go ahead, Sherri.
Last thing is contact tracing. We're still doing it. The only thing is that the labs are a little bit slow on the return. So you know, the most effective way to contact trace is getting them as soon as possible. So that's not, that's still taking at least three or four days, sometimes longer than that if it's like Quest. But that's about all I have.
Yeah, the Governor just puts up, not with the commissioner of health, you know, begging these sports groups to stop traveling because they're finding a lot of these youth groups, lacrosse and Pop Warner, they're traveling to these infected states. They're coming back to Connecticut and they're not quarantined. I mean, this totally defeats what we're trying to do and it's just undermining our future efforts. But you know, they gotta get a handle on it. Very, very difficult though, but I still think the Governor's done a good job with the phase reopenings. I don't anticipate anything will be open before schools open though, as far as, you know, increased measures or capacities in restaurants. And I would hedge the guess that it won't take long before schools potentially close once they open. As the criteria to, when you have a positive, it's kind of subjective right now. Is it two days? Is it 10 days? Do you just isolate that cohort? Do the teachers have to go home? So there's a lot more to come on the schools, very fluid.
Can I ask a question, Scott, about the waves? This is not at all what I anticipated and maybe I just didn't, didn't understand it properly. But I know you're talking with Dr. Dunn all the time. This doesn't seem as if we've had the end of the first wave yet. And if that's the case, you know, is this going to be just one, one big line? Or do we anticipate, are we still anticipating that we're going to get to it? Like I know Connecticut is doing much better, but the country is not. The world doesn't seem like it is. I don't know.
Yeah, good question Angus. It's somewhat of an unknown, you know? It's just, it's hard to gauge for sure. I don't know, what do you think Sherri? It's, you know, you don't want it to coincide with the flu. I'm sorry, but you gotta know, I mean, coronaviruses are seasonal in nature for the most part. The thing that makes this different than the other ones is because this isn't really being subjected to seasonality like others, right? We thought in the beginning that heat, humidity, stuff like that would really taper the transmission. But look at Texas, Arizona, Florida, it's really not doing what they thought. So what you're seeing in Florida, Connecticut now, we're still in that first wave. We kind of haven't gotten out of that. And then that could go into a bigger wave based on the coronavirus being more seasonal in nature and exacerbate the issue. So it could just be a continuous line going down, I mean up, but that would be dependent on how, what we're doing. Are people still wearing their masks? Did they get a flu shot? Are they social distancing? So it's very subjective, but yeah, we got a long road ahead of us.
The other, the other thing is, is that, you know, we know people are going to continue to get it sick until we have herd immunity from this because it's a panda, it's something we've never had before. So nobody has immunity. So you're going to get everybody continuing as they open up and people are exposing themselves to each other. You know, they're still going to get positive cases. The, the other piece of it is, is that most of the people that I'm in contact with are asymptomatic. So they, they are not sick, sick people like we had in March and April and May. You know, they are, oh, I just was part of my police department's, you know, weekly testing or I was just part of my assisted livings testing. Very, very, very mild, hardly any symptoms at all. So that, you know, so it's not like before.
That sounds positive.
Yeah.
It's a positive direction anyway. Do you want us to talk?
I was going to say, I was just going to ask quickly, the Deep River numbers in particular, you said are still at 18. That's the total number. Do we have any indication as to, you know, have we had any new ones? Or it seems like it's been standard. Are these all, these people are all healed up? They're not healed up, but they're past it. And generally speaking, Deep River is a healthy town right now.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean clinically, they're using about a two-week metric.
Okay.
You know, to get better. But you know, taking it off a hot list or the home or something, we just had an issue today where we had, you know, one of the cases in Hattam is the fourth case in the home. And the first case was what, two months ago? So it's just like, you know, it just can keep evolving and Cherry sees, you know, false positives and false negatives. And people get tested three or four times in a row and it's negative, then positive. It's just absolute insanity, but a lot of that is with the testing. And each testing has different specificity. So not everyone that just gets a test is getting always the accurate result, unfortunately.
And you know, and because everybody's flocking to the shoreline, you know, even though our communities are well, we're at high risk for people wanting to be in our areas.
That seems to me, that's one of the big, big issues along the shorelines. Folks are coming here from elsewhere. And hopefully they're all from Connecticut. I know, we know they're not, just look at the license plates in Park.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
I mean, at this point, there's not many states left to come, you know? I have other mindset, we're probably going to see a total state closure, I'd imagine at some point. I mean, we had 22, then 27, then 31, now we're at 35. I mean, you get to a point where it's difficult. And we're starting to see a lot of bad pictures from the Jersey Shore and that area. So you know, Connecticut's taking it a lot more seriously now than most states, even our partners to the north. So I don't even know if I want Rhode Islanders in our state right now. In fact, they sent out a message last week that they don't want Connecticut people at Pier Beach, that's right. So I mean.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
My brother's there. Would you guys like to talk a little bit about the flu shots coming up and how you're planning on doing that?
Sure, Sherri?
Sure, um, we're going to be trying to do the most safest, effective way for both people and those vaccinating by doing a drive-through vaccination clinic, which has been done as part of preparedness before multiple times. So there, there are plans and we're tweaking those plans to, to meet the needs of our communities. Scott has developed a really great pre-registration form, which we use that technique back in H1N1 because of supply and demand. We had to know how many people, because we only had a certain amount of vaccine, which, you know, this will be a certain test for COVID. So we're looking to have, we don't know how many drive-throughs, but we want our pre-registration to be sent out soon this week so that up to all the town halls, out to all the senior center, everywhere. So people can pre-register, so then we know how many clinics would be most appropriate in each of our towns. And so that's what we're planning. And we have tents and tables and flags and you know, we also have, I'm getting a scanner, a mobile X scanner for, the CTWIZ program is a program where I get free vaccine for children through the state from 18 years and under. And actually, I was told today by our regional lead that CTWIZ providers, which we are one of them, are where COVID-19 vaccines will be dispensed from only. So if you are not a COVID, if you are not a CTWIZ provider set up with the state already, then you will not be receiving COVID vaccine. So this will be a precursor and it will help us to be better prepared for the mass vaccination of COVID as soon as that's available.
Who's, who was able to sign up for this thing? I mean, is it?
Any provider, all health departments?
No, I mean, as far as an individual.
Oh, anybody?
Anybody, I didn't know if there was an age factor primarily or?
Only, well, four and, we're only doing four and above. We've consulted with Nico Kandoulis, the pediatrician with Wildwood, who is, you know, does a lot of, all of our towns. And we had always been that because you really, we always wanted best quality of care and to be under, to vaccinate under four, you really should be a pediatric nurse because there's different sites. And, and we also agreed that doing a drive-through, it would be difficult to get to the kid's thigh, which is usually the, the spot of choice. And so if he takes care of, if, you know, the pediatricians take care of their smaller group, that will leave plenty for us to do.
How is the public going to be notified of this availability?
Good question, Jim. Website, we're going to ask each town leader to put it on their website. We'll have it on our website, emailed, word will get out, we'll do some press releases and kind of go from there. It's going to be very unique and challenging, you know? Everything's 10 times harder with COVID, no matter what you do, you know?
Yeah, last year I went to, I went to Walgreens and it was easy.
Right.
You know, it's not so easy anymore.
Yeah, but it will be a good test for COVID potentially. We just have no idea what the sentiment is out there. I don't know if there's more anti-vaxers, if there's less. I mean, we really don't know. So this pre-registrations could be very interesting, so.
And we're really pushing our SNFs, our skilled nursing facilities, all of our VNA's and everything. I mean, those have always been optional. The hospitals have always mandated flu, but when you're dealing with potential flu and COVID, it'd be nice to take out one of those of the mix that are going to affect our most vulnerable population.
Nice.
Any other questions?
Comments?
We could talk all night about this.
You really can, I know.
Listen, thank you so much for the work that you guys are doing. You're really talking tremendously, keep us all safe. Appreciate it and thanks for coming tonight, giving us this update.
You're welcome.
Really do, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is tax refunds from the tax collector. We haven't had these in a few months, but coming up again. So we have four refunds, the total amount of $1,153.01. It really ranges from $21.80 to 500, so. But that's where we are. We'd like to get those checks out to Ken this week so we can get a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to, for the tax refund, an amount of $1,153.01 for the four participants that were provided.
Second that.
Thank you guys. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Next item on the agenda is to discuss some possible action on the EDC vacancy. And I see we have some EDC numbers here today, great. And at least one of our applicants is with us tonight, so maybe you're here from Jill. But we had a vacancy, one of our, one of our newer members. And only the best. For a year and a half. Carolinas in the house bought it and sold his house all, all in a week.
Wow.
So he's, he's gone, which creates a vacancy on a commission. We have had Jill, Jill Larson is here today. She applied last time we had a vacancy, but we had folks, folks in front of her. We also have Stacy D'Nello, who has requested to be considered for, for this vacancy. And these are a couple of really good opportunities for us. I think Jill certainly brings some, some youth and, and great education to, to a commission. And Stacy brings a local business person to the commission. So it's, it's a tough decision. I'd like you guys to talk about it a little bit. If we make a decision tonight, that's great. If we put it off and you guys want to have a private conversation with Jill individually and with Stacy, that's great too. If you want to proceed, okay with me. But we are in a good position. We've got a good, good active commission and, and good interest in that commission.
The only, the only, the only question I might have, I've, I've known Jill. She's one of my daughter's best friends from the time they went all through school. So I know, I know who Jill is. It just recently, just recently came up where it looks like, is, is the bed and breakfast, the D'Nellows for sale?
I don't know, there's no sign in front of it.
I saw that as a Sotheby's listing and that's.
Really?
Yeah. And I don't know if that's true or not. It was online as, as to that. There's no sign out front and, and, and I, you know, I don't know if that's in fact a true statement. They're trying to sell it. If they, if they are going to sell it, are they going to move or whatever? I, I have no doubt of their, their business, business connections with the running and upgrading that place. It's a phenomenal place and been a valuable party, part of the economic health of the, of the town of Deep River. But if they're, if they're selling it, I'm just concerned, not concerned, I'm wondering what, what their plans are as, as far as, you know, you know, they're going to stay in town or not.
Oh, that's a good question and it's speculation and maybe that's, that's worth, worth the call. I know their son bought a house here in town, so.
Yeah, they did. But I would, you know, as far as I, like I said, I've known Jill. She's, she's a recent college graduate. She's, she's motivated and, and I think in a, in a lot of, a lot of what we do in the towns and all that, we have the same old guard that get involved with everything and we need not only young blood, but we need new blood. And.
Oh, that's, that's true. I do want to say though, that the EDC has, is kind of leading the charge in that.
Yep, and that's good. And I think when it's, when it comes to driving the economic forces in town, you, you gotta have everybody from the, from the young people to the old people. And, and I don't specifically know right here what the makeup is, but as, as far as I'm concerned, I think Jill would be a good, a good addition to the EDC.
Yep, I think so too.
I'd like to chime in a little here. You know, in the past, we've always taken the next person in line. Just time, we have two very good candidates. Jill came to us, I believe, back in December before all this COVID set in and showed interest. Yeah. I don't want to call out the young lady's age, but you don't see too many young ladies or young men at that age wanting to get involved in sort of town politics.
Absolutely.
Again, no disrespect to the D'Nellows, but she has my support to move forward on the commission. Because like I said, we, we always asked, back last fall, we were constantly saying, you know, step up, step up, step up. And now we have a young lady here that wants to step up. So I think she would be an asset to the commission. I don't know the makeup of the whole commission. I know a few people on it, but I don't know the whole makeup. So if they accept her, great, that's what, I'd like to move forward with her, with Jill.
Then I would suggest based on those two comments, and somebody make a motion and we'll, we'll make that, make that happen.
I make a motion.
Vacancy, I believe the vacancy is 12/1/2020.
Okay, I make a motion.
Or not the vacancy, the term to expire.
What was the date again Angus, I'm sorry?
12/1/2020.
12/1/2020. I make a motion that we appoint Jill Larson to the Economic Development Commission for term to expire 1/24/2020.
I'll second it.
1/24/2020, that's already passed, 21?
12/1/2020.
Oh, I can't read my own writing, 12/1/2020, there we go, okay. I'm sorry, can't read my own writing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that, congratulations Jill, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming out and thanks for.
Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I mean, I did want to introduce myself to, especially.
Your reputation preceded you, I guess.
Yeah, especially Christine and Sue, since I know they're on the, the commission. And it's nice to meet you guys and I've sat through a couple of your meetings so far. So kind of what Jim and Dwayne spoke to, I am, I'm 24 and, you know, I work right now up for Eastern States Exposition. We run the Biggie, so we're dealing with a lot of, you know, COVID things, keeping a lot of our local businesses intact by producing other events and stuff. So I'm definitely tapped in to that whole industry, especially right now. So I'm pretty excited to work with you guys.
Welcome, we welcome you too. We need, we need people like you to help with this commission, so I look forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Same here, thank you Jill. I don't know if anybody can hear me, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good, okay, good. I did, I was just looking, just an FYI on Sotheby's, and I don't see Stacy's, the business listed. And also I think there's, I thought was my understanding that Ted resigned, is that not the case yet?
No, Ted has not resigned.
Okay.
Um, no, I forgot, and I, you know, he's, you know, in one ear and out the other, I've forgotten the name.
Ted McKenzie, yeah.
Bill, Bill.
I do build it, yeah, okay.
No, Ted has not resigned. So good, welcome Jill, I think you'll.
Absolutely.
Might be somebody, I don't know if you, I'll say, I'll forward your email contact information over to these guys so they can all get you on the agendas and get you invited to when they're having their meetings.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you Jill.
Thank you.
Audience of citizens, anyone else have anything they'd like to speak about? I see a couple of folks, Alan, there's no last name and some 5753400, the folks are here. They'd like to have any questions or comments on the audience of citizens, now's the time.
I don't know if they've got any, I gotta, I'm sure you probably have a couple of things Angus, I gotta.
Fire away.
I'm just curious, in the past couple of years, we've done a really, really good job in the town of reclaiming and repaving roads and whatnot. And I think it's, it's a phenomenal thing. The question I have is that the town roads are striped and where the, where the recent repaving was done last year and all that, there is no stripage. Yeah, I was wondering if that was part of the contract, where you pave and you re-stripe? Or if it's, the striping was, is something?
It's separate. We, we had arranged for that last year, but if you remember last year, the scheduling got really goofed up and they were paving much later in the season and then we just ran out of time. We're gonna, once they, once they pave, which I'm hopeful, actually, we're just making, we have all of our bids in, we're just making our choices. I'm hopeful that we can start that in the middle of August and be done paving in September and then, and then stripe the roads.
Okay, well, I gotta say, I am impressed with the, with the reconstruction of the patching that's been done on Kelsey Hill. And I understand that, you know, it's going to be coated and, and all that kind of stuff. But it was, it was, in my opinion, it was a good job and it was definitely needed. You know?
Yeah.
Because Kelsey Hill, you know, that's the, one of the bone of contentions when in the tri-town areas, Kelsey Hill gets abused by all three towns. And Deep River pays for that town, that road. And to see it, to see it deteriorate and be fixed at our expenses, Deep River taxpayers kind of goes sideways with me a little bit. Because again, all three towns, people do abuse it and, you know, with COVID and even prior to COVID, you know, the lines of people driving their kids to school and picking their kids up at school, combined with buses and all that kind of stuff, it just beats the heck out of that road. So, but yeah, they did a good job there, so.
Well, this, this is, this treatment that we're trying, we're going to try it a couple of different places. And it's supposed to buy five or seven years or add five or seven years to the life of the road. And if that works, I think that it will, will make it part of our, part of our summer routine.
What about an update on the bridge Angus, anything?
Not anything right now. We're, they're starting some work up at the, they're redoing this, this street light at Southworth and Union. In order to, I'm not sure exactly why they're doing that, but they're redoing that light, so they're going to see them up there.
The bridge on Route 80, that's supposed to bid tomorrow.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about that. We're trying to, trying to get the state, I haven't gotten any response from PFC, but try to, try to make sure that bid is, that we can get that to be, you know, at least a two double shift so we can keep that road closure as, as short as we can.
And correct me if I'm wrong on that project, wasn't Kelsey Hill designated as one of the detours?
Kelsey Hill is one of the detours, yeah.
That's even worse.
Kelsey Hill is the designated.
Yeah, that's, that's horrible for that road, so.
No, that's right.
Yep, I have, I have one more thing on my hit list and it's, it's one of my little pet peeves is my neighbors' Hanes materials. I don't know if you recall, but I talked to Gina this past week, they blasted last Thursday at 2:30. And Mark and Rick has all their programs over there and no one from Hanes notified the town. And no one from Haynes notified the town or Parker Rec that they were going to blast at two thirty. And, uh, I was concerned that all those kids running around over there would have had a, a one hell of a wake-up call when that blast went off, because I know from being the closest relatives, I'm relatives, um, uh, neighbors, and I'm surprised sometimes the windows of my house don't break. Um, it's, it's that bad. So I can only imagine little kids and from what I understand from someone, there were some kids over there, they're oversensitive to that kind of stuff. So that was, I just think that's very poor public relations on the part of Haynes. I know that we as the town of Deep River and individuals in town, whether you want to buy bricks for your, your burning pit or your, 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 you know, your fire pit in your backyard to major construction for buildings and roads and all that, we depend on that place. I, I get that a hundred percent. But if you drive by there, especially in these dry times, you see the front end loader riding around and there's a huge cloud of dust that comes out behind it as it's running around in the pit. And the cloud of dust that comes off the dry processing plant over there, it has obliterated my house. Um, it will go over Plattwood Park again with the kids or just regular taxpayer, taxpayers there enjoying Plattwood Park and, and there, obviously there's no outside activities that John went through, but I'm, I'm, it's gotta be getting up there too. So, you know, I don't, I know you've talked to him Angus and, and personally I, I, I think maybe, and I'm, I'm just going to throw it out there, that may be a letter from the Board of Selectmen to the Haynes corporate headquarters.
Well.
Putting them on notice might be something to do.
I depend on, well, a couple of things. Um, I'm certainly not going to try to defend them at all for not notifying camp or the town, but I'm not sure that they're aware that camp is down there. They know that the park is there obviously, but I'm not sure that the camp was. And I appreciate your call
Yeah.
to, uh, to what's going on. Um, I depend on you to tell me how that dust is doing because we spoke about that a couple of weeks ago and, and you indicated that it had been, it had been better. If it's not again, then let me know and I'll
As I know, you mentioned that they, they mentioned they were putting calcium down in an effort to try and incur it. But if you, if you go by there anytime when there's, there, there's no rain, the trucks and the loaders and all that, it's, it's pretty amazing from anybody from the industrial park to residents to the park is depending on which way the wind blows, you're going to get, you're going to get nailed.
Well, we'll, um, make another call. If, if you think it's gotten bad again, I'll make a call. Um, thank you. Uh, let's see. The only really thing that I wanted to speak about a little bit is thinking about opening these meetings up, uh, it's in-person again. Uh, the state certainly is allowing for that. And I miss you guys. And everybody who's coming. We have to, the meetings have to be a hybrid. We, we still have to do Zoom for folks that, that don't want to come or can't come. But, but we can in fact meet in the town hall. So I'm trying to work towards some way to do that, that is effectively broadcast. I, I attended a meeting in Essex the other day, uh, that they had the Zoom going. People were spread out pretty far around the table because it was a big meeting. Um, and they had a microphone and we could all hear the people on the computer. But the people on their computer struggled to hear us and that, that's my only concern, um, about that.
About possibly putting some sort of a big screen TV that's not huge.
Well. I don't To that, to that point, that's an interesting thing. The guys from, uh, I guess from CHA who are working on, on the, as our CEOs right now are working on a steep grant. And one of those ideas that they're looking at is, is outfitting the auditorium for exactly that, exactly that purpose. So, um, that's not anything that's going to be immediate, but it is, it is, it is something that we're working towards. If we can use grant money to do it, it's that much better because whether we like it or not, this, I think this is here for a while. And, um, and again, whether we like it or not, this technology has, has allowed for more participation from people. Whether they're, whether they're in town or out of town, um, they can come to these meetings. And that's, that's a possible for public, public participation is what this is all about. So, um, we will, we will go towards that. I, I like the idea of outfitting that upstairs. So that we just throw a switch and we're on TV. Um, but that's, that's it for me really. We're
I have one more question. I know earlier we talked that maybe the end of this month, we'd be talking more about that tax anticipation note. I was curious as to how the tax collector is doing with tax collections and as to whether or not it looks like it should or shouldn't or maybe still, or do we have any
Now, we'll talk at length about that at the Board of Finance meeting in a little while.
Yep.
But, uh, we're doing okay. And, you know, if we're in that range where one day we're a little up, the next day we're a little down. It's just kind of, you know, but we're just a little, uh, I'm keeping, keeping the option open, but as of right now, we, we're I think, but this is a big week. We'll see. This is the last week in July.
Right.
Uh, this is typically the biggest week. I, um, so we'll see what happens. Plus with that program, we'll see people are probably going to delay a little bit, but right now we're okay. We don't have to worry about it. Um, but we'll see, uh, later and later in the next month.
Okay.
Anything else for anybody?
That's all I got.
I actually, I have a question. Can I ask?
Now's the time, yeah.
Okay. So I don't really know the protocols or the steps, or if I have something I want to talk about, do I need to contact you Angus or first to be put on the agenda? Or how does, I don't know how this works.
That's the best way to go about that is to, is to send a letter, send an email or just make a phone call. And we can talk about putting, putting what you want to talk about on the agenda.
Okay.
The second thing, if it's, if it's a little more immediate, um, come to the meeting and during the audience of citizens.
Right.
Start the conversation. Um, it's difficult on something like that, you're probably not going to get a vote or anything like that taken. But we can discuss the issue.
Being on, you have some time to do some research or whatever.
Okay. So if I, okay. And if it gets put on the agenda, right, it would give you guys time to do research. Okay. And that's, and that's fine. That's fine. That's good. I, we can wait until you guys meet every other week, right?
Second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sometimes they come really fast and sometimes
Yep.
But if there's nothing else, um, I'd like to thank everybody for your participation. Jill, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Welcome.
We'll see you at the Christmas party.
Thank you.
Distance.
Yeah.
That's right. But, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn meeting at seven oh nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Night.
Oh, good evening, everyone. This is the, uh, Board of Deep River Board of Finance, July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty meeting. Um, we should start by approving the minutes. Would anyone make a motion to accept the minutes as, uh, Laurie submitted them to us?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you. All right. Any discussion, Laurie, are we just, we're just discussing, we're just approving the June minutes, correct?
Yeah, just the June twenty-three.
Got it. Okay. That is, uh, that it's accepted.
Bud, you need a second?
Yeah.
Uh, we need a second. Yes.
Yeah.
And, uh, all in favor of, uh, accepting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, my, uh, well, uh, Laurie's, uh, uh, universal, uh, agenda is an excellent one. And as withstood the test of time, I'm going to be a little playful. Here's what I hope to do tonight. I'm going to give you a brief update on tax collections and the conversations that Angus and I had on the region for health plan or our departure from it. I will then ask Amy who has, uh, asked to come chat with us. I will ask Amy to chat with us. Uh, I will then get asked for an update of the planning and zoning, uh, and then we'll go to recommendations of the selectmen, which I don't expect there to be much. And we will then review the June thirty budget. And then we'll talk about anything anyone would like. So unless anyone is uncomfortable.
You left out Tommy. You left out for Tommy Lincoln.
Oh, Tommy, Tommy. Actually, let's shoot Tommy to, uh, right now. We usually bring Tommy in right at the stop top. Uh, Tommy, you want to take it?
Okay, thanks guys. Um, hopefully everyone received, um, the report, the deposit report, uh, Kathy has, uh, supposedly sent it out to you. So hopefully you all have that.
I do.
And I, I would say it's, it's, it's very good news. Um, we're probably, when I spoke to Kathy today, she said we might be a little slightly behind last year. But we're doing extremely well. Um, I did make two transfers of funds, uh, one on July twenty-fourth for a third, uh, for one million, three hundred thousand. Another one on July twenty-seventh for two million, three hundred thousand. So, um, three million, six hundred thousand total that went from our general fund over to our Liberty, Liberty Bank account. So if you look at our municipal sweep money market account with Liberty, we're at, uh, five million, five hundred and one thousand, five oh nine, sixty-five cents. Um, if you look at where we were last year at this time, at the bottom of the deposit, uh, sheet, you'll see that, uh, on July twenty-third, we had five million, seventy-four thousand. Now we're at seven million, seven hundred and ten thousand. But there is a four-day differential there. Uh, that was, uh, last year was based on July twenty-third. This year's based on July twenty-seventh. So this is of course four days of uh, getting, uh, revenues, tax revenues that, that, uh, would have been coming in. Um, a couple of things regarding, uh, Liberty Bank, the business money market account with Liberty Bank, uh, that says one point, one oh percent interest, that actually is one point, oh, eight percent. Um, that was a special, special account. Uh, we can't add into that account. Um, because it was a special, uh, I did talk to Melissa Hurd, um, yesterday. She's the government banking representative at Liberty Bank. She's our, kind of our liaison. Um, she indicated that unfortunately rates will be coming, continuing to come down. Uh, that account on August first will change to point seven, five percent. Uh, the other two accounts with Liberty, larger accounts that we have, the municipal sweep money market account, our, our big account will go from point three oh to point two five. And the capital non-recurring fund account will do the same, point two five. Um, but that's, that's the name of the game today. I mean, rates are plummeting across the board. Um, she said they're pretty much in line. She's trying to keep in line with a stiff account with the state of, uh, Connecticut. Um, but, you know, I think, I think we're in very good shape. Um, I know we're, you know, we had talked about, uh, you know, doing some borrowings. Rather we have to do that, I, I question that now because I think we are in, in, in very good shape. I think our, our revenues have been coming in unbelievably well and, uh, very, very happy about that.
I mean, what is the total amount of dollars you believe that we have in the general fund at the moment?
Uh, in the general
Yeah, you gave it a minute. I didn't write it down.
Well, our general fund, you mean for all the general fund account balances?
Yes, yes.
Um, altogether, we have six million, six hundred ninety-one thousand.
Six million, nine? Okay.
Uh, six million, six million, six ninety-one, six forty-two, sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
So six million? Okay, good. All righty. Um, following that and
What's that?
I don't know.
Someone wasn't muted.
Somebody was, uh, celebrating all the money we have, Tom. So, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tom.
Sorry, Tom. I had a quick, compared to last year, we're within a couple of hundred thousand dollars of where we were last year. Is that it?
Well, I spoke, when I spoke to Kathy today, John, she said we were about, um, seventy-nine thousand dollars behind.
Seventy-nine. Wow. Okay. So that's, yeah, that's nominal. I mean, that's
I think the thing, it is really, really good.
Yeah, that's
But I think the thing, the thing to keep in mind on this, and I, 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 I'm very, very happy that we are not in a position where we need to go for that loan right yet. We're still, we're in a very busy week. And day to day, this goes, we're above or we're below. It's, you know, every day is a different number every
Right.
Um, I think we're in that zone where we're, we're, where we don't have to worry. But we've got a week, you know, we've got a week, we're below today, we'll be above tomorrow, we'll be okay.
Yeah, we were
But this is a very, very busy week.
Yeah, no, no.
Coming in every day. Or not, and we'll see. So far, so good. Let's knock on wood and we'll all breathe a sigh of relief in this year.
My car, my car taxes are still on their way. So.
Several million.
Ferraris are well taxed.
I'd like to make a comment if I could. Uh, first of all, uh, Angus, I, I too am pleased by this and, and, and Bud, I know you've been keeping tabs on it very closely. Uh, as well as Tom has. And I think we're okay here and, um, my big worry is with people out of work, I think they can find money for the July taxes. I worry a lot more about the January taxes now that we're sort of, we're not past this point, but we're, you know. So if people continue to be out of work, that's, that might be more of a problem at that point. I just wanted to say that.
That's fine. I, uh, Kate, I helped Kate, uh, process, uh, tax bills on Saturday. So my number that I'm about to give you is a Saturday, it's close of business Saturday. We had collected in July of this year, three, uh, five point three million. Last year at the same time, we had collected five point seven. So there's about three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars difference. As Angus just pointed out, as of the close of business, what that was yesterday, probably the, those numbers. Um, it is, the gap is full, is, is filling in. So, as everyone says, I do not believe we yet have sufficient information to make any decision whether we should proceed with a borrowing. That's a conclusion. If you're tolerant of idle conversations, every time I look at these numbers, they are slightly below last year. We have increased our mill rate. They should be, remember this is idle conversation. They should be a little bit higher. So I don't mean to be gloomy, but I believe the watch that we are keeping is a wise watch. And, uh, I think we're a little too early to celebrate anything, but we shall continue to watch. Uh, this week is a big week. We usually finish July with about forty-five, forty-six percent of our total taxes collected. We have collected about thirty-three percent to date. So I was out of Saturday. So we will continue to monitor. I do not think, as everyone is agreeing, I do not think we should be initiating any movement to a borrowing unless people think we should. But I think we're okay. So that is my news there. You know, unless anyone wants to add more to it. Pay attention, more to follow.
Um, I do have a question for Tom, though. If I, if I may. Uh, if I can get my phone to work again. The town clerk checking account. I, I was never quite clear what goes in there and what it's used for. If someone can explain that to me for the unthink millionth time, that would be great. And then, um, it's a twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that high? Is that low? Should we do a transfer? I don't, I don't know what that means particularly. That's a question.
Would you like me to answer that question? As the town clerk?
I think we have a wonderful opportunity to hear directly from the town clerk.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the, uh, the town clerk's account, we, we collect a lot of different fees throughout the month. Um, and they are all put into the town clerk's account and make weekly deposits. And then at the end of the month, I figure out how much goes to which department, which state department, and how much gets transferred over to the general fund. So it's all dispersed out of that account.
Okay, very good. And so that's all set up. There's a process in place. That's all I really need to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Let me, let me keep up with the updates. Uh, Angus and I went and sat with the superintendent and the finance staff at the school on Friday. The finance staff is Kelly. What's her last name again Angus? Do you remember you?
Steiner.
Steiner. That's the dog singing. Uh, and I thought we had a great meeting. If you remember, um, I had sort of set a tone where I was fearful that we had a, uh, we had an unanticipated cost as we exited the plan. Um, what we were told is we have responsibility for any claims filed by our employees and their families through June thirtieth to date. That number spent about three thousand, a little over three thousand dollars. Um, and there is an adequate reserve up there at the, the region for, um, funds. The claims will be paid out of that reserve, which is over a million dollars. So, uh, Angus and I left there very confident that there will be no, under normal conditions, there will be no incremental cost to exit the region for plan. That's my update on that. So, uh, yeah.
Yeah, we can't know that for certain yet, but, um, it, we have a pretty good buffer there.
Yes.
That's right.
Uh, it, it is, and I, uh, I'm concerned that I sent you into, all into some sort of high level of worry. So I think it is good. Uh, with that in mind, let's, uh, let's turn to our visitors, uh, Miss Amy, who is, uh, uh, an honored guest. Uh, Amy, you have asked to speak with the Board of Finance and Selectmen. I shall allow you to decide what you shall chat about.
I wonder, I wonder if Amy would give me a second to, to introduce her here.
I wonder if Amy would give me a second to, to introduce her here.
Sure.
I want to make sure, I, I've got something, uh, that I need to apologize to Amy directly, but also to, uh, to the Board of Finance. Um, at our last meeting, I, uh, I misspoke pretty, pretty badly when, uh, Lori asked about the, uh, the overage on the assistant tax, assistant town clerk line. Um, I, I, again, I, I, there's no excuse. I, I went directly to what was on the top of my head and what was on everybody's head, which was COVID-nineteen. There, there was no relation between, um, that overage and additional hours put in by Joyce for, that had anything to do with this pandemic or anything other than, um, another bad communication that I had with Amy. And this is, uh, this was a conversation that I did just a horrible job communicating to Amy and there's no excuse for that. My, my inability to say no, um, in this particular instance, really just, just led Amy down a wrong path. And, uh, and I, I, when, when we left the room, I, I, she, Amy had asked me very clearly whether or not she had authorization to move Joyce to twenty-four hours. Um, and I hemmed and I hawed, but I did not say no and I, and Amy walked away from that with a, with a yes. So she was moving forward, uh, thinking very clearly that she had the authorization to do that. Um, that was a mistake on my part not to be clear. Um, and, and that's, that's what brought us to this, to this spot. And I apologize for that miscommunication, number one, to Amy a year ago, but also to you all last week when you answered that question. So now Amy's here to talk about a little bit of that.
So, thank you, I appreciate that Angus. Um, and so yes, there was no maliciousness, I had no, no reason not to think, well, I did. I thought I had the authorization. I was not just saying I could do whatever I wanted, I would never do that. That's why, you know, a little over a year ago, when I came before the board to say I was, I had found over an eighty-five hundred dollar savings and could some of that be applied to my assistant salary line? Um, I, if I thought I could just do it, I wouldn't have come before you and her salary line would have gone up a lot more. So, you know, I, I don't have delusions of grandeur there. Um, so the reason I'm here tonight is because, you know, I, here I thought we had made some progress in that area. So essentially, since I watched the Board of Finance meeting, read the minutes last month and realized we did not have that authorization. And so Joyce has tried to go back to twenty-two hours. It, I've never had a more difficult month in my office. We cannot get the work done in that amount of time. She, Joyce is, I'm gonna embarrass her now, but she's an extremely conscientious, anxious employee. So she immediately went back to the practice of punching out and coming back and working until she could finish her work for the day, which isn't right. No employee should feel like they have to do that. Um, so I'm once again asking for more assistant hours, um, for my office. I've been asking for this for pretty much all the years I've been here. I've not been successful in conveying to you that that is actually necessary. I'm not, I'm not looking to take time off or anything like that. There's a lot of work in my office. We have a very steady, um, stream of people coming in because we, we handle such a wide, a wide variety of responsibilities. So anytime during the year, it ebbs and it flows, but for the most part, we've got a steady stream of people coming in and a steady amount of work coming in, um, to do besides waiting on the public. So, um, I thought, I, I sent around my little spreadsheet. I hope you had a chance to look at it. And Lori, I don't know, Angus, if somebody can share it? If not, if you, you know, if you, if you have it, I can go through it. I'd like to explain what each of the columns means in, in relation to my office. Is it something you can put up, Lori, or no?
I don't, but, do you need another PDF?
You email me a PDF, I will, I will try to go through the process of downloading.
I sent it yesterday to you.
No, no, I know you did, but this...
So, let me, um...
My laptop is not, it's my laptop.
Why don't you just pull it up on your phones, everybody?
Because sharing when you're not the host is, is a difficult thing to do.
Uh, well, me, I can get it on my phone.
Okay, Angus, you want me to send it to that same email?
Send it to that email, I'll try to open it up and, uh, and we'll go to town here. It seems like we can do it, so I'm confident that, guys, bear with me and we'll, we'll get to this. While we're waiting, I do want to point out that both, the, the effort that Joyce and Amy are putting in right now is, is remarkable. And it's an, it's an unusual situation right now in, in all the town clerk's offices around the state because of this election and, and pandemic. The, um, and Amy can explain it better than I can, but the absentee ballots are just driving the town clerk's offices to actually to, some around the state are closing to the public and Amy and Joyce have done a great job not doing that. But that's going to, regardless of where we land, land on the twenty-two hours or versus twenty-four hours, there will be additional hours put in to cover this election that has been mandated by the Secretary of State's office.
Question concerning those, those absentee ballots. Have they automatically been sent to all tax or all, um, registered voters regardless of their political affiliation?
No, for the primary, they sent absentee ballot applications to all people who are registered in either of the major parties. So any unaffiliated voters or independent voters or anything like that would not have gotten one.
Okay, that answers that question.
Yeah, but come November, it will be everyone.
Okay, that answers that question. The second question is, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding that whole process, but aren't our, um, election officials, aren't they, okay, there goes the screen. Aren't our election officials the one that tally those? How are they going through the tat, the town clerk's office?
Well, town clerks are also election officials. We handle all of the absentee balloting, which is why the fact that the absentee balloting has exploded is causing so much difficulty in our offices. And the state had tried to put things in place to alleviate some of that on the town clerks. Um, a little bit of it worked out the way they said, about two-thirds of it has not. So we are, we are, we are just devastated. Um, but I do want to make sure, and if you have more questions, Lori, that's I, I don't, I want to make sure that my little spreadsheet here is separate from the COVID thing. You know, I, I, this is based on our regular work throughout the year before COVID. Um, that being said, I do not believe this absentee ballot thing is going to go away. The Secretary of State has been wanting to do this for years. We're now being forced to do it and I don't think we're ever gonna go back. I think I'm, I think absentee balloting has become the way of voting in this state. And so the burden on town clerks is, has massively increased.
I think that's true. I think that is a political, um, move. Um, was that successful? Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, if there are any more questions about balloting, I can answer them, but, um, otherwise I'll go forward with this. Okay?
I have a question about the ballots. So this would last from approximately now or the last, I don't know however long I've been working on it, through November. What happens after the election?
After the election as far as absentee balloting?
Yep.
Um, once the election is over, there's a few reports we have to file, which I anticipate will be much more difficult this year. Um, just because there's just so many more of them. But the absentee ballots are counted on the, on election day through the same voting machines. So, so once it's over, we're pretty much done.
Okay, so no more absentee ballots after, let's say, after the report's running? Just to pick a date, November tenth, you, you go back to normal?
Well, I would hope so. As far as elections are concerned, I would hope so.
Okay, good.
Okay?
Amy, do you anticipate that, for instance, the regional vote, the vote on the school, um, going to your concept that absentee ballots will always be with us? Do you think it would apply to that as well?
You know, I don't know, referendums, the state pretty much keeps their hands off of. Um, and, you know, I would hope by the next budget referendum, we'll be allowed to just vote at the polls. So it's hard to say, but again, there's also going to be a lot of people who weren't aware that absentee balloting was even available. Um, it's now available to them. So there, I think there will still be somewhat of an increase then, which would be welcome. That has a pathetically low turnout, but, um, which is part of why the Secretary of State has been pushing for it, trying to get everybody to turn out to vote. So, but again, I, you know, I can't be sure that, that's my feeling about it. If we have a vaccine and everything's in place, people won't be as afraid of the polls. But once they, you know, discover it, I don't have to go to the polls at all, I can just do this. Well, then they might just do this.
Excellent, you okay?
Okay?
Are the absentee ballots, I have a question, are the absentee ballots counted after in-person voting or how does that work?
No, it's done at the same time. They, they go periodically throughout the day at the polls. They open them, count them, feed them through the machine. So the final count that you get at the end of the night includes the people who voted at the polls and all of the absentee ballots.
Okay, so in, in theory, what would happen if a person submitted an absentee ballot but also showed up in person?
No, we go through the voter list before the, the election and we check off every single absentee ballot that we have received. So if that person were to come in, they would be told, no, I'm sorry, you already voted by absentee ballot.
Oh, okay, so it's only, you, you only go through the day before the election for the absentee ballots? Okay, gotcha, okay.
With five hundred of them, we might have to do it a few days before the election.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, I was just curious how it worked if it was, you know, if one came in, an absentee ballot came in on day of, what would happen?
Right, day of, we would bring, bring it down, as long as we received it by the end of the day with a poll. So then we would bring it down there. If they had discovered that, um, that person had come in and voted by a poll, then that absentee ballot would be discarded.
Okay, cool, all right, very good.
Nice try, John, but you can't do that.
Yeah, no, I know, I was trying to work out the angles.
You have obligations, John, you, to your party, yes.
Yeah, no, 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 not, not this state, this state, it doesn't matter.
So you're probably right there.
Ones that come in late aren't counted?
That's clear, yeah.
Pardon me?
What about ones that come in late?
No, if they're at, received after eight o'clock on election night, they are not counted.
That's what I thought.
One other question I have, um, is this, I mean, for lack of a better term, since the Secretary of State is having you send out the absentee ballots, is she sending them out? For a two-part question, is she sending them out or are you sending them out? And then is this unfunded, like an unfunded mandate would be?
Um, right now, the Secretary of the State's office handled sending out all the applications, which were returned to our off, our office and, and we processed them. And then they have hired or contracted with a mailing house out of Rhode Island. And they are supposed to send all of the ballots out and then we would receive those and process those. Um, that, that's been part of the problem. The mailing house was supposed to mail out thousands of ballots on the twenty-first of July. And we found out that they were actually mailed out. So there...
So again, they were mailed out on what?
They were mailed out yesterday.
Oh.
Yeah, so people need to receive these and then mail them back or they can use this new absentee ballot drop box we now have in front of the town hall if people don't trust mail. Right now, I'm not so much. But, um, so it's not working out the way it was supposed to. The phones have been ringing off the hook, everybody's looking for their ballots. They always think it's a conspiracy. So, you know, we've had, it's been extremely difficult to get anything done in my office.
I received mine about two weeks ago.
Your ballot or your application?
The application.
Application.
You haven't gotten your ballot yet, have you?
Well, I don't want one, I'm gonna show up at town hall, so...
Which is fine.
For the elementary school.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. But yeah, the people who did apply, I have people who applied literally in February because this was initially supposed to be in April. Um, they still haven't gotten their ballot.
Ah, okay, that's, that is, all right.
Second part of the question is, is there any, any funding available? Or is this, you know, this falls squarely on the shoulders of the town budget?
No, actually, there's supposedly a large grant that we will be able to put in for. So any, um, like, any additional assistant hours in my office as a result of this, we can put in for reimbursement through that grant. So the polls, a lot of the expense of, at the polls, moving the polls, getting them ready for, you know, COVID, um, a lot of that is, or probably all of that is going to be covered. What was not covered is we had to order ballots and we had to order them, order them in an obscenely large amount. It, it's utterly ridiculous. It's a complete waste of money in my opinion, but they want to be ready. So we had to order equal parts, eighty percent, which we've never had eighty percent turnout ever. Uh, we had to order eighty percent poll ballots and eighty percent absentee ballots. So, and the town has to pay for that.
Right, but that would come from the, um...
From the elections.
Yes, yeah, not from your line, in other words.
Oh, no, God, no.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to talk about my office now? So, my little spreadsheet here. Um, I chose the, the bordering towns to compare mainly, well, partly because they're bordering towns, but they're also population-wise closest to our town in Middlesex County. Um, so, and I included the population because it does actually dictate the amount of foot traffic in an office. Um, the hours that the office is open, obviously smaller towns are open less, fewer hours and the bigger towns, um, more hours. But I included also, um, if they closed for lunch or not. And I did that for a reason. Um, the town of Chester closes at lunchtime. We do not, um, the other towns do not. I, personally, I feel it, it's a great disservice to the public because anybody who works locally, noon, their lunch hour is when they can come into these offices. So we stay open during lunch. But what that means as far as assistant hours are concerned is the town clerk in Chester, while she's trying to get her work done, she has her assistant there for all the hours that their office is open, so she's there too. Whereas I have to use four of my precious town clerk, I mean, assistant hours just to have my lunch hour. So that, that is significant in that regard. And that's when I started trying to figure, figure this out more on a percentage basis. Um, because on the face, it, it, it doesn't show. So the next three columns are additional responsibilities. So the town clerk's office has statutory responsibilities. Um, and, and many town clerks, especially in the smaller towns, will take on some additional responsibilities just, just to help out. Um, so I asked, um, I, I talked to the town clerks from these other towns and asked them what they did. And as you can see, um, Killingworth and I manage our town website. Chester and Essex don't at all, they, they have other people to do it. Um, for issuing hunting and fishing licenses through DEEP, uh, both Chester and Essex stopped doing it and they've been sending people to us. So that has increased. Um, for issuing park or dump permits, uh, you can see that Chester does both, Deep River does both. Essex only has a, I, I said dump, I meant transfer station, but, um, they only have a transfer station. Killingworth doesn't handle that at all, the Killingworth Town Clerk's Office. But I put an asterisk by Deep River because even, while Chester does, um, issue both park and transfer station, um, permits, they have one small park and they don't even have a transfer station. Their permits are only, um, you know, to, for people, their residents who want to come to our transfer station and, and you give up the bulky waste. So i- in our town, and in Essex, they only have a transfer station. They also charge a, a nice fee for their permit. So I don't think they get anywhere near as many people trying to get into their dump as we have, people trying to, you know, finagle a way to get in and use our dump for free. So, um, so the asterisk by ours is we have a very active dump and we have two very popular parks. So that permitting thing, which has grown exponentially first, since I first started, is a huge responsibility. It's become very large in the office and unfortunately, the timing of it, it, the weather gets nice in June. So they start coming in out of the woodwork for, for, in June, which is when we're trying to license hundreds of dogs. And we're just now, at the end of July, getting caught up on the dog licensing from June. So I just, I, I'm pointing this out because I, I most closely get compared to Chester and Essex. But if you take a look at it, I do a lot more than the offices in Chester and Essex. So then if you move on to the assistants, the smaller towns have part-time assistants, the bigger towns have full-time, Killingworth gets full-time and part-time assistants. And I've listed all of the assistant hours with us at twenty-two. So then if you look at the last two columns, I've figured out the percentage of the assistants' hours um, based on how many hours the office is open and then also, um, per capita, because like I said, population does show some of the foot traffic into the office. So if you take a look at that, at twenty-two hours, Deep River has the least assistance of any of these towns, which I don't, and we have, and we take on more responsibility. So this is what I've been trying to say over the years, you know, there, I, there's no reason that should be. I mean, this, this office is understaffed, I need more assistant hours. I don't know how else to demonstrate it. And if you look down at the three lines at the bottom, I had figured out additional hours for the assistant. You know, and how we... I had figured out additional hours for the assistant, you know, and how we would measure up then. Um, 24 hours puts us, uh, per capita, even with Chester and Essex. But they don't have the additional responsibilities that I have. If you do it at 26 hours, we get a little more in line. Um, and 28, even better, um, even closer to Essex. But what I wanted to say is it's, these, the additional responsibilities, um, I think are what's, what's killing me. Um, 24 hours, we were, we were, 24 hours at least stops Joyce from feeling like she had to go and punch out and come back and work some more. Um, but if we stay at 24 hours, and I hope to God we at least get there tonight, uh, some of these additional responsibilities are gonna have to go because I, I, we just can't handle it anymore. It's too much. At 26 hours, I believe we probably could year-round handle the additional responsibilities, um, but not anymore. And then at 28, we probably, I could, I could probably, um, take the website responsibilities that Carol has for Parks and Rec. I could probably take that off her hands. You know, there's probably other things we could do too. So my office is a real value to the town. And we've always had an attitude where we want to help, we wanna, you know, fill in where other people can't. Other offices get, you know, burdened at certain times as well. Um, but the way things are now, we can't do it. And I'm, I'm, you know, I don't like to say I'm begging, but I am begging for more assistant hours.
I have one question concerning the DEEP licensing. You're saying that Chester and Essex are sending people to us. What is your tracking to show that they are and why are we handling theirs when they're not residents of our town? They should be turned away.
Because you're not, no, you're not required to be. It's a statewide system. They can actually go in online and do it themselves. They can go to Walmart and get them. It's done as a courtesy to the residents. And so both those towns, when they both called and said, you know, we're not gonna do it anymore. We don't think it's worth it because we really don't get a lot of money from the state for it. Um, but I mean, I feel like it's a courtesy. So sure, and I didn't.
Okay, so courtesy for our residents. So it should be restricted as far as I'm concerned to our residents. If you're not a resident, you don't get that privilege. Go to your town or go online. This is for residents only. How ma, how many do you actually do? I mean, do, you know, how big of a deal is this?
Um, you know, it depends. We've gone anywhere from 200 to 500 licenses a year. Uh, we only, the, the people who are 65 and over get them for free, which is nice for them, but we still have to do the work. Um, and that's at least half of what we do. So, you know, but we don't, we make like a dollar a license. It's not a big money generator. It's a courtesy. So just as doing notarizations is a courtesy, that sort of thing. We're not statutorily required to do it. But, uh, most town clerks do. The trend has been that they're giving it up and it's because they don't think it's worth it.
Okay, and how many of those are actually non-town residents versus town residents? What's the percent?
That's hard to say because it's a statewide system.
But when they come in, aren't they required to show you a driver's license?
They, well, I, they don't have to show us their driver's license, but they do have pass fishing licenses. So yes, they do come up in the system. Um, so I guess, yeah, we could, we could say, I'm sorry, you're not a resident. You have to go away. Um, that leaves us with more angry people to have to deal with, which is never fun. Um, so I don't, I'm just, I, I'm neutral about it. I, I don't care if we do it for other towns or not. I think it's nice that we do it, but I'm not married to it.
Let me ask the question in a different way. Um, if people, how many hours on average, how many hours a week do you? And then how many hours a week does Joyce spend issuing those DEEP licenses? Is it two hours a week?
You know, it, it's, it depends. At the beginning of fishing season, it's the majority of the people who come in, that's what they're doing. Um, same thing for hunting season around, you know, November usually. The majority of the people come in are hunters. Then it's just sporadically throughout the year. And it's hard to, you know, it, it's hard to put a time thing on it. Um, it's just, you know, one, one more in the steady stream of people coming in. That's one more reason they have to come in.
What is the most amount of time for Joyce? What, how is she spending her day? What is she doing? That is an increase, that isn't already or wasn't already, but what, in this past year, when she was given the extra 22 hours, um, I guess I want to find out what extra the town clerk's office is doing that they haven't been doing before. Where are they helping out other departments where they should be focusing just on their own department?
The, primarily the park stickers. Um, the parks have gotten very, very popular. We separated the stickers out from the transfer station stickers. Um, only the town clerk's office can issue those. They can't issue those at the transfer station. So that is overwhelmingly the biggest and that has gotten bigger and bigger every year. Um, we've gotten stricter with people who can get those stickers because of course, everybody wants to come and get stuff for free. Um, they trick the gate guards and they try to trick us too. So that is the largest one. Um, managing the website increased my responsibilities, um, meaning that I had less time to wait on the customers as they come in. So Joyce, Joyce, um, she indexes all the land records. And again, that depends on the real estate market at the time, but there's always work to do there. And she also handles, um, like the month-end reports for indexing of our vital records. She'll handle the people who come in looking for copies of vital records or pretty much anybody who comes to the counter. If I am at a spot where I can put aside what I'm doing for the moment and, and she's busy with something else, I will jump up and cover the counter. And once she leaves every afternoon, I can forget about getting any of my work done again because then I am on the counter waiting on whoever comes in.
Amy, for lack of ignorance about, literally about the ins and outs of your job, what, what is, um, what is it to issue a park or a dump permit? Is it a long runout process? Do you have to investigate licenses or social security numbers? Or what is it you do to issue a permit?
Well, we have to, um, see their motor vehicle registration. Um, and it's surprising how many people are not willing to do that. But we make them do it. And then often we find that they are in fact not registered in our town, even if they do live here. So then we offer them a temporary pass until they get their cars registered in our town because your car is actually supposed to be registered in the town where it stays at night. Um, so, and that involves going to either the tax collector or the assessor who has access to the DMV website in such a way that they can check and see if that motor vehicle is actually registered in town and DMV just hasn't gotten the paperwork out yet. Um, so there's that. And then there's also, um, there's the people who live part-time in Florida and part-time up here. So they don't have their cars registered here, but they want their stickers and they're entitled to them. So there's investigation for each of those. Um, so it, it, I know, each of these little duties that we do, they sound like, what's the big deal? You've given them a sticker. But there's more to each and every one of them. And when you start to pile them all up together, it makes you a very, very, very long day.
Amy, may I interject?
Of course.
Also, don't forget, within the past year, we did change over our land record software system. And even though we love it and it's saving the town a lot of money, it, it is a little more time-consuming. So within the past year, m- my time is spent on the land records with our new system. That is taking, you know, a bit more time to do because of the way the system works.
Right, and we thought that.
Can we let go away?
Pardon me?
Sorry.
Or is, would that go away because it's a learning curve or, or is that a permanent?
No, 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 it's just the way the system is. I mean, we love the system. It's a wonderful system and it's saving the town a lot of money and we love that too. But it's just the way the system works. It's a little more time sent, time, there's a little more time that's involved in doing the stuff.
And when we decided to move over to the new system, we thought we'd been authorized for her to have 24 hours. So the, the 24 hours allowed for that e- little bit of extra work. Um, but losing it is, is being, that's really hard.
Thank you.
What is, what is the financial impact between 22 and 24 hours?
A thousand dollars an hour per year.
Two thousand dollars.
No, two thousand dollars.
For every hour you add, it's about a thousand dollar incremental to the budget annually.
That was, that was broken up, so I didn't hear it.
It's about a thousand dollars for every hour you add.
Per week. So it's a two thousand dollars for the year.
It's two thou, two thousand dollars for the year?
Yes.
If it's two hours, that is correct.
Yep, if we went to 26 hours, then it would be four thousand dollar increase.
Okay, I, that's, you know, when it comes to, when it come, I'm not on the Board of Finance, but when I look at the money, I'm going, whether it's 22 or 26, my opinion is very, very minimal on the impact of the finances of the town of Deep River. And the, uh, and when you come in, unless you're looking for, for Gina or whatever, you know, that's probably, if you, if you watch, there's probably a big, big number of people that go right instead of left. And, uh, you know, if they don't have a, they don't go to Gina, they'll go and find out. And, and again, part of your, I'm, I'm sure you probably, people come in and ask you a question. You go, well, that's not something that I do here. You gotta go see the assessor's office. You gotta go upstairs. You gotta go see Gina or whatever. Well, that takes time.
Right. And sometimes they don't believe us and they argue.
And, and to me, it comes down to the money, whether it's 22 or 26. That, that amount of money for what they do, me personally, I'm not on the Board of Finance, but it doesn't seem to be significant enough that we should, we should be debating left and right about it. I'm sorry.
Any additional questions of Amy or Joyce?
I do. I have a question for Amy. Um, the, it shows that the office is open for 33 and a half hours. And I'm, you'd have to run me through that to, to, I, I don't know how that works out. But then how many hours, I, I take it that you would take lunch, Amy, and that you would work less than the 33 and a half hours. Is that true?
Right, I'm, I'm supposed to work 30 hours a week. Um, I, I will tell you, I work more than that every week. But I, I'm salaried. That's, that's fine with me. I, I stay late every day. I want my office to be closed up properly. So that's not a, that's not a big deal to me. Um, it, the odd 33 and a half hours. Um, when, many years ago, I'm, I think probably like eight years ago, most, most towns offer late hours one night a week. And it's important because the people who work out of town can't get to the town hall, you know? So I wanted to do that. Dick wanted us all to do that. Um, so I said, well, yes, I'm going to do it. And I, I was gonna work until seven o'clock on Thursdays. And for a year, I did that by myself. Um, and I made up the difference in my hours by coming in late on Thursdays. So I, you know, I would, so I stayed at my 30 hours, um, but the office was able to stay open. At that time, we stayed open all day on Friday as well. So we just kept that going. I just adjusted my hours and did it that way. And then about a year later, and I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to explain to you how this evolved because it's a little odd. About a year later, um, the assessor's office and the tax collector's office came on board the late hours as well. But they said, well, we're not working late on Fridays and we're, we're leaving at noon on Fridays. So at that point, I said, well, okay, then I guess we'll close early on Fridays. But I stopped coming in later on that Thursday. And then it happened to be in the summer and the summer concerts were at 6:30. And the tax collector wanted to go to the summer concerts. So we started closing at 6:30. I will say that half hour is more than made up because I'm never out of there by noon on Friday. Um, it, it gets made up. It's not a question of me putting in the hours. It is a little awkward when you see 33.5 hours when everybody else has evening hours. But that's how that came to be. And I will also say that the late hours are important, but they're not busy. They're for the people who can't make it any other time. There's not a lot of them. But the ones who show up are very grateful we're there. Um, but, you know, 6:30 to 7:00, I would say most Thursdays, we would not see a soul.
Okay, so on, on average, how many hours are you working? And I know that you're, you're, you said your hours are 30, but are you working 31, 32, 37?
Forty-five.
It, you know, before COVID, it was probably 32, 33, you know, just staying af, staying later and making sure everything is closed up tight and finishing the things I couldn't finish because the people are coming in. We lock that door at four and then I can get some real work done. But it, yeah, it's not, it's consistently 31, 32 hours. During COVID, it's been significantly more, you know, so I don't get home till six or seven some nights. It's a little better right now, but I'm expecting that to get worse again. But again, I'm salaried. That's, I, I agree. That's part of being the head of an office and being salaried is we have to do the extra hours when they're required. But, you know, that, for me to have to be doing all the extra hours to do also, in addition to my responsibilities, the responsibilities that my assistant can't get to because she doesn't have enough hours, just, that seems a little unfair to me.
I have a question. How much did that new system actually save the town?
Eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Per year or one time?
Per year.
Okay.
How much extra time is it actually taking to run that system?
Um, I would say probably two hour, two, well, no, because Joyce was at 20 hours with our old system. Between two and four hours a week, uh, because the, when we thought we had those 24 hours, i- it was filled. There was, you know, it wasn't, there wasn't any leisure time in there.
Okay.
You know, just a point of clarification, doesn't salaried mean that you have to work as many hours as your job requires?
That's what she does.
Yeah, that's what I do. Um, but the job should only require 30 hours. That's why the salary is based on that. But because I've taken on additional responsibilities and they've grown and in part because of.
So the salary is based on a 30-hour work week?
Yes.
I always assumed that the salary is based on the job, never on an hourly. My daughter-in-law works salary. I've worked it in the past and it's, doesn't matter how many hours you work it, you work it. Some weeks you work 80 hours, some weeks you work 24. You know, it, it just depends on the job that week. So that's my understanding of salary.
My paycheck says 30 hours a week. My vacation time is based on 30 hours a week. Okay.
One, one other question, Amy. The website that you administrate for the town takes, uh, again, on average, best you can, takes, how many hours a week?
Um, I would say anywhere from a quarter to a third of my day goes to it. Um, and again, it depends on like when we have big events like COVID or when, when Dick passed away, that it becomes a huge responsibility and I'm doing it at home in the evenings, on weekends and everything. Um, but in general, on a regular basis, it's probably a quarter to, so what, what is that? Um, one to two hours a day?
Couple hours a day at least, yeah.
Yeah, one to two. It depends on what's going on.
Okay. And, and we just redid the website, I happen to know, because I was on the Economic Development Committee at that point, uh, that we were looking at it. And, um, how is the, the new website's going? Okay, is it better? Is it easier? Is it worse?
I like it better now that I've gotten used to it. It's a huge, huge learning curve every time they update. They've only updated it once. There's still some bugs, um, but there's a lot more that can be done with it. It's like, it, before if we had, if we wanted something to be emailed lasted, you had to sign up for absolutely everything that got posted with the email lasted to you. And now there's a way to subscribe to specific mailing lists and that sort of thing. So in that regard, I think it's better. Um, i- it, it's better, easier, not so much. I think we can do more, um, but it means I have to do more. But I, I do think it's a better system.
Any additional questions, anyone? Uh, I'm going to ask someone on the Board of Finance to make a motion. And that motion was, we'll put the motion in a positive, uh, to make a motion to increase the town clerk assistant line item by, and I suggest we drop in hours because I don't know the numbers, but they're about a thousand dollars an hour per year. Um, I want you to think about that if, if you, someone wishes to make it. The other is, uh, um, we've talked about the savings from the, uh, system. I do not, Amy had an excellent idea what the savings was. Amy's budget or the town clerk's budget is about fa, a little over $5,000 surplus as we leave June 30. So there was the savings. That includes the overtime for the assistant that can use. Um, and, uh, I, I think it is important that maybe we make a distinction between giving Amy hours into the future and recognizing the immediate needs to address the voter absentee. Um, so we may wish to deal with this in two different ways, but, uh, But, uh, with that background, and does anyone want to clarify what I'm saying or asking or something? I'm looking for a motion for them, someone on the Board of Finance, and eventually a second, whether they wish to increase the hours for the Town Clerk Assistant.
Shouldn't that be coming from the Selectman?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, that, you know, what, if anything, we should be giving the authorization to the Selectman to make that decision.
Well, okay, that is good. I suggested it is our decision. Now, if you're looking for the Selectman to give you some, um, support on that, uh, uh, it is a good question. Angus, does, uh, do have the Selectman discuss this and have a strong enough feeling to make a recommendation?
We have not discussed it as a group at all. Um, this, my, just the way that this came out, when, when I didn't have the authorization to tell Amy yes or no, and I didn't say that, I just didn't say anything, um, that confused this issue. But, uh, the Board of Selectmen has not discussed it since it was discussed last, last year, when the last, whenever the last request was.
So can this be put on hold till our next meeting?
Then clearly, uh, clearly expressed his opinion.
Well, and can I-
I, I, I can't tell you, um, very much at all, other than these folks are working pretty hard. Um, it is, I don't want to cloud the issue with the, with the ballots, um, because it's, it's a separate issue entirely. Um, I, I, you know, I, I see how busy they are, I see how hard they're working. I, I would, I would suggest that 24 hours is a, is a legitimate request. Um, and I would, I would support it. My, my only real concern, it comes down to the confusion that I, that I guess I created. Um, and, you know, we're past the beginning of the budget. Now, we're very early in the budget, so it's not gonna have a big impact on, on that. It's just the timing is, is awkward. But the Board of Selectmen has not discussed it at all.
Well, this, this appears to be a personnel issue, which is a, which is not a Board of Finance issue. It's a Selectman issue.
It's a person, it's an hours of the office issue, and I guess that, that is pretty much funded, funded by you. So, um, you know, when we're preparing the budget, the, these offices come to you and say, you know, every, at least every year I've been involved in the budget, they've come, Amy's come to the office and said, I need more hours. And you guys make the decision whether to fund it or not. I, I support the idea that they could use more hours. Um, Joyce has been working extremely hard.
I'm still confused over the hours of the office. Is it an hour, hourly?
Amy's job is salaried. She is elected official. Joyce is hired. She is not a salaried official person. She is paid by the hour.
Okay, but one interacts with the other. Salaried interacts with the system.
Well, they work in the same office, it's just that Gina, um, you know, I'm, I'm salaried, and Gina is paid by the hour.
Right, but, and I don't know how to say this without sounding like I'm being caustic, but if you're a salaried employee, you are salaried-
But we're not, we're not here, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, Carmella, but I'm going to. Um, we're not talking about Amy's, Amy's, um-
That's correct, that's correct.
We're here talking about Joyce and the Assistant Town Clerk's line, and whether or not we're going to move that from 22 to 24 hours, as has been requested. Um, you know, we moved it to 22, two years ago, I think. Um, Amy came in and asked last year if we could move it to 24. Based on the, the save, I think she was basing that on the savings, but changing, changing the, uh, changing the software, but also on, on, on her perceived real need to do so.
Angus, can I jump in?
Yeah.
You know, we've listened to Amy and Joyce tell us for the past 35 minutes of how busy their office is, which I've been in there, I see how hard they're working. Um, we heard Bud say that we have a $5,000 surplus in that line. We heard Amy tell us that they saved $8,000, uh, by going to this new program. We, we've heard a lot of information. We're going back and forth. Uh, I believe Bud said it's $1,000 an hour. And if this is a Selectman's decision, um, I'm gonna put it out there, Angus. Uh, I support 26 hours, that, I'll make a motion to it, and that's, I, I'm gonna make the-
We, we, we're out of, we're not, we're not in session here, but we, we can't make a motion, we can't vote. I certainly, I certainly, um, support the 24 hours, uh, that, that we've been working on, so.
Well, we might, we, it, it appears it's obvious that we need to address this at the next Selectman's meeting is the only way to do it.
Yeah, 'cause I, I really believe that this is a Selectman issue, Board of Finance issue, especially since we said the money is available.
And, and I, and I would echo Lane's numbers also, in my opinion.
That's fine, that's fine, and we can do that. Uh, my question to you is, uh, is when we, when the Board of Selectmen comes to you with a recommendation that we should do this, are you going to just say, okay? Or are we gonna have another, have three hours of conversation?
The Board of Finance is gonna tell us no.
Because that's-
No, we just string you up and then go ahead and just move on anyways. Come on.
Can we move it to the next Selectman's meeting and make a-
Yeah, we certainly can, we certainly can. I, I did not think that that was, that was what we needed to do because, just because of the way that we do the budget, um, every year.
Oh, that's what we have to do?
Let's do it.
Make a, make a, make a recommendation for hours that, you know, you, you guys can decide on-
That's fine, yep, that's what we'll do.
But I, I, I have a request then, because, um, we, especially with COVID and the additional ballots, we, we can't wait a month or two weeks, or we need authorization to increase our hours, not, not necessarily permanently, but we're, right now, we have to have the authorization to increase our-
Oh, I, I wanna talk about something about that. This is a, this is, this is a separate issue. Um, and we talked about this briefly already. There are two issues that we're talking about, both of which involve, both issues come directly to the hours of operation of the Town Clerk's office. This, what we, what we just spent the time talking about, the majority of that time was talking about, um, what the, the normal operating hours are, are required to operate the office. Amy is, um, recommends that that's anywhere from 30 to, to 24. Um, it's certainly more than 22. Uh, what, what we're gonna talk about now, or what, is the, um, the immediate need for, uh, additional hours to be spent tallying and whatever, whatever work is required, not only from our office, but we only care about our office. The Town Clerk's offices across the state are being inundated with this additional effort that they need to put in, and that requires more hours. I don't know how many hours that is. Amy hasn't clearly stated that, and I don't think Amy really knows what those hours are going to be. We're going to see in our budget, that, that needs to happen, that, that's happening everywhere. Um, and, and it's mandated, that is mandated, and we have to make sure that people are able to vote. Uh, so there's no question, there's no question about that. So until November, we're going to some more hours. The Secretary of State's office has promised that with CareZAC money to be, to be reimbursed. Um, as you will note, most times that we get promised money by the state, I, I look at it, uh, with, with some doubt as to whether or not it will actually happen, especially in this situation where the state is handing out money right and left, um, or promising money right and left, and I don't know where they're getting it off. So I think that we can, we can, we can say we're going to allow for these hours. We, we need to allow for these hours because the work needs to get done. We may or may not be reimbursed with that, but we are being promised that that money will be reimbursed. But I don't know what those hours are. Um, I, I've been working or trying to communicate with Amy about, about, uh, the fact that we need the hours, um, but we don't know what those hours are gonna be. But we know there are going to be additional hours in that.
Just temporary authorization we're talking about right now will end in, uh, November?
I, I think that's what Amy said earlier. As soon as the election is over, that should be the end of it, till the next election.
So I think there's two questions before us. One, we are sort of postponing and handing to the Selectman for a recommendation. We'll deal with either next month or the month after. I suggest, I will be bold and say that, that the dog is barking. I will be bold and suggest that, uh, Amy and Angus should work together to accomplish what needs to be done on the absentee ballots, and Amy should keep track of those hours with the assumption that it will be reimbursed. But we should not place any constraint upon Amy and her office to get that done.
Actually, how we can-
That is, that is what we're doing, and, and, uh, and, and we will continue to do, uh, as far as I know. I mean, the town hall in general, any additional costs are being logged, and we're gonna be trying to get reimbursed for all of it. This is just another one of those situations.
Again, my recommendation is we do not place any cap upon that number. We simply encourage Amy and Angus to work together to get the job done. And hopefully, we'll be reimbursed, but it could be the town costs.
Yep.
Yep.
Does that require a vote?
No, I don't think so. We, we're, I think that that's something that we're just going to work on. It's just exactly as, as I described it.
I, I don't think it requires a vote unless anyone wishes to express a reservation to that. Again, I gave, gave them the authority. I suggest that give them the authority to just do what has to be done.
I agree with you.
Unless anyone disagrees with that. Okay.
I agree with you.
It's not unique to Deep River. Every, every town in the state's doing it, and everybody's gonna learn and figure it out. And, uh, so how can you put a constraint on something that nobody knows?
No, you can't. If it's mandated by the state, then it's mandated by the state. Don't do anything about that.
Uh, well, I, I can think of a way to put a constraint. We can put a constraint on so many hours, and, uh, Amy comes back next month or September and gives us an update, and we re, uh, re-up the constraint. But I'm suggesting that get the job done, and we'll talk about it in November.
I think, I don't know, Amy could speak better to this, but I think we might see a breather after the, uh, after the primary, but it will probably kick right in again pretty quickly.
Primary is August 11th.
August 11th, okay.
So, and, and we would do, in order to get reimbursed, we have to keep careful track of the number of hours that are, are worked over as a result of the election. So we would probably portion off the day, like, save all of that for the end of the day, and then just stay until it's done and keep track of those hours that way. Right, we'll have to, we'll have to figure out a system.
Yeah.
All right, I, I think we've moved the ball slightly down the, uh, down the court. Is that an analogy that still holds? But, uh, so, all right, well, Amy, we will obviously see you in the future.
I mean, nowhere so big.
So cool. All right, uh, I, I suggest we now move on to the next item on our agenda. Uh, Alan, I see you sitting there, um, uh, working away, using your time productively. Could you give us, uh, an update on where the planning and zoning is on? I'm almost gonna let you do the same as Amy, follow your own agenda, but certainly where you are on hiring and where we are on the, using the services of our contractor.
Uh, absolutely, and I, and I will, um, I'll try to keep this, this, this brief. It's not necessarily my forte to, to be concise, but, um, um, I'll, I'll try to summarize it and be succinct as possible. Uh, where we stand on the, on the hiring process, we have, uh, basically reviewed five candidates, uh, which includes CHA. We have a new proposal in from CHA, uh, which is the consultant we're currently using. Uh, of the other candidates, resumes that we've received and, uh, reviewed, um, three of them were just not qualified to, uh, fill a position. And one of the, uh, candidates who potentially was qualified, uh, is, is unable to meet the, uh, CACIO certification, which is required of the position. Um, so in terms of the CEO applicants by resume, um, we did not receive any that could fill the position for us as a town employee CEO. Um, in discussion of our options, the, uh, commission of the members who were present at the special meeting that we held were, were unanimous in their support, uh, to retain CHA, uh, as our CEO. Um, CHA is the, the consulting firm. Um, their track record so far is exceptional. Um, and this was our expectation because they're a professional organization where you, you're actually using, uh, two individuals primarily, um, uh, that have, uh, certification in planning as well as in, uh, CACIO certification, but, um, other qualifications as well, including, uh, wetlands, um, sustainable buildings, LEED, et cetera. So I, we've, we've got a exceptional candidate in the form of a consulting firm. Um, just to give you some, some background on what they've done so far, brief time that they've been our acting CEO. They've already received and responded to 20 inquiries and requests for information. Um, they responded to, uh, four, received and responded to four complaints. Uh, they've received and acted on 15 zoning permit applications. Um, so this is, is actually a, a pretty busy period, and they've handled that, um, uh, seamlessly. And on top of that, they're closing a backlog of issues that goes back, um, uh, for, for a considerable time. These are open issues that needed to be addressed. Uh, we haven't had the capacity to handle them, to handle them. This includes complaints about the Valley Railroad cars, um, an issue pertaining to an illegal subdivision out on Westbrook Road. Uh, they're addressing discrepancies between our, within our statutory, uh, requirements in Deep River's current zoning regulations. They're handling a lot of the legal aspects, um, that quite often we, we need to rely on our, our legal consultation for. Um, in addition to that, they've also addressed, uh, the, uh, they've put in, in an application for an affordable house planning grant. Uh, they've addressed the, the, uh, steep funding, identified projects with the Selectman, MBZ for, uh, town projects eligible for steep funding. So they're, they're, they're really performing as we expected as a professional organization, extremely efficiently, uh, and the feedback that we're getting, not only from, uh, the commission, but from the public, is that, um, they've been incredibly responsive and professional, and just the mere fact that they're addressing a lot of these outstanding issues is, is, uh, very important for the town. So it was unanimous in, in from the commissioners that we would like to retain CHA going forward as our, um, uh, CEO. We initially requested a proposal from them with our budget in mind, as I presented last time, trying to hold to a, uh, budget that was commensurate with where our CEO was in the past. Uh, and we, we did have a proposal from them in a range of $30,000 annually. Um, but that did require to scale back the presence in the office, the hourly presence. Uh, I think there is some comfort level with the commission in regard to that, being able to handle the specific tasks that we have for our zoning enforcement officer. But I think that there was some concern on a part of, of the first Selectman, perhaps the Selectman as a whole, um, that the presence in the office is expected by, um, uh, the residents of, of Deep River. That is precedentally established of having eight hours of, of, uh, office hour time. Um, and so I know Angus had requested that they adjust their proposal to, to, uh, include the hours that, uh, our residents are accustomed to in terms of a staffed, um, uh, land use office with a, with a CEO. So, the summary is, we've, we've identified, as you've requested, who we would like, and we're coming back with the number that's attached to that. Uh, in order to get the coverage within the office, um, uh, that is desired, uh, by the, the folks in town hall, we're looking to increase our CEO compensation to $44,000 annually. Um, so that, and again, that's driven by presence in the office and not necessarily the, the initial request on a proposal as far as addressing the specific tasks. Um, I didn't, you know, go into much more depth in terms of their qualifications and their, uh, accomplishments. I didn't, you know, go into much more depth in terms of their qualifications and their accomplishments and, and expectations. But I think I just wanted to indicate to you, we were very cognizant that we're in tough fiscal times. It is not a good market out there to retain a CEO with qualifications that we're, that we're seeking and require. And we think that this is absolutely the best option. But it does, in order to get the, the hours of service that, that are expected, it requires an increase of our budget. And again, we've had, I've had discussions with Angus. I believe that we're on the same page in terms of what we want in a CEO. And I'll let Angus speak to it, but I believe that he's also in support of the, the budget that we're requesting, although I think in, in the spirit of also being fiscally responsible, we will continue to work with consultants to see if we can streamline operations or bring the cost down. But, you know, it's, it's our findings that this is the, the cost of that service, which is appropriate to the town of Deep River and we haven't found a acceptable alternative.
A good summary. I, I'll summarize Alan's position. He did a fine job summarizing. I don't know why I have to summarize, but we have, you have sent out, you advertised, you have got people who applied. It seemed like a rich enough number to get an idea of what's out there. You found nothing. The alternative would be to either permanently or again to go month by month with this, with this firm. Was it the CNA, CHA? From, I'm going to suggest that the last Board of Finance meeting, there was a leanings. I don't know how strong to make the word. It leanings that the board would like, and I think the selectmen would like, I don't know those selectmen I've talked about here. A leanings towards having a zoning enforcement officer as opposed to a contracting firm, but they are merely leanings and things we would like to have. I'm not sure. The budget, the budget in the prior year, the budget that ended June 30 was the salary for the zoning officer was about $33,000. In the current budget approved by the town, that number went to 17. So if you wish to go to, is it 44? We would have to increase this budget, that line item from 17 to 44, which is a pretty good sized number. I don't know how anyone wants to react to any of those observations, which I'm just repeating some of the key points that Alan pointed out. Angus, do you wish to opine or?
Yes, yes, I do. Yes. I, I, I will say that these, the CHA has always been, you know, this is their job. This is what they do. But they do a very good job at it. I smile a bit and I will opine just a smidgen that I don't think that we were in as dire straits as Alan seemed to have portrayed as far as where, where the town was in the position. Certain, certain complaints were addressed to the third or fourth time with the same answer. Maybe finally we got through. But the, the fact remains that we, we have been advertising now for six weeks and have received only five applications that are of any, of any five applications and only one of which that has any real merit to, to be able to hire them and, and they cannot satisfy one of the, one of the requirements. And we have one applicant who is just a recent graduate who we may be able to, to bring on as an intern and work with these folks who, who spend a lot of time. They, they told me when I raised this issue with them that they've trained four different people to, to replace them over time. So the most recent being in Clinton where the current zoning officer was trained by CHA while CHA filled in for them. That, all that said, this firm brings, I might say this just a little bit differently. They bring a lot to the table beyond just the zoning enforcement. They have, they're already working on a couple of grant applications for steep, steep money that the governor just made available that will help the community in many ways, one of which is in our meetings. We're hopeful that we can get some monies and equipment to set up the auditorium where we can have these virtual meetings at the same time or in, in harmony with an intensive meeting, which is where I think this, we're all going to end up. Anyway, they are much more expensive and I guess the Planning and Zoning Commission was comfortable with, with reducing the hours in the office. And Alan and I spoke at length about that today, but I'm not. I, I think that the town, I think I watched that office just like I watched the town clerk's office and they're busy up there. They're, and they're responding to people in a timely manner. And I'm not sure that that happens remotely. There's, it's not a walk-in world right now. We don't have people walking into the office, but people are making appointments to come in and talk with them. And there, there is activity up there. I think we're going to see, seeing applications begin to, to come in and certainly requests for applications. So we need to have someone there. These folks fill more than the role that we are used to. Not saying that they're better at all, but they, they, they do more. They have more available. And I think that that, that value is, is something that's worth paying for. I'm not comfortable yet saying what that number is going to be. We have a, we have a proposal for them, $4,000 a month, which to this year would be 44,000, but to next year would be 48,000. That is a smidgen more than I think, than I'd be comfortable with coming to you with. And I'd like to continue to negotiate with them. And I think we can. We've already been able to negotiate the cost. Or their fees down considerably from, from where they were a month ago. So I'd like to continue to, to have the opportunity to negotiate that. We don't need to make, and you don't need to have a decision today. We have money in the budget that will cover another month with these folks. But it's important to know that, that we are going to continue to negotiate and we will probably come back with, with, with a negotiated fee for them, which we will need to increase this budget line item. I think that it, I, I know that, that there's a lot of value there. I don't want to reduce the hours to, to make up the money. I think paying the same amount of money for less services is not the, not the right way to move forward. But this is, this is a moving target. This is a different way for this town to move forward. I'm, I'm trying to speak with some of the other small towns in Connecticut that they work for to see how they, how they're transitioning from a, from a zoning enforcement officer to them. But I can tell you that Deep River has transitioned very smoothly in every way other than the cost. These folks have fit right in. They work well with the other folks in the office. They work well with the other folks in the town hall. And they seem to work very well with the public. Not everybody is happy with their decisions, but their decisions are founded on, with knowledge and experience. And I'm very pleased with, with their, their work. I don't know if that, if that said anything right there. I was just to try to offer my support that they're good group and that, that I want to work with them and that I want to work to try to get them here at a little bit more reasonable cost than what they offered right now.
Historically, in the Planning and Zoning Commission, we run into legal problems. We've run into legal costs. We've run into a lot of extra things and from what I'm hearing, this new outfit, it is not new, so to speak. You know, this contracted outfit is solving a lot of these problems and is also solving other problems. Are they financially balancing out, let's say? It's the word I want to use.
Well, that's where, that's where, you know, time will tell. Time will be able to answer that, Bill. It's a good question. They will be able to, you know, I don't know about historically. I haven't noticed historically, it depends on what's going on. We've had, we've had a couple of, one person in particular has sued the Planning and Zoning Commission three or four times now. We've always succeeded in that, but that drives the legal cost. In the last year, with that, with a little bit of a disrupt, not a little bit, with a disruption in our zoning enforcement office and probably some, some dis, some concern from some of our members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have had to bring in, or they have had to bring in their legal team more than, than they had in the past and that, that drove that. To answer the question, yes, I believe that with a strong zoning enforcement officer, we will be less likely and less inclined to have to go to the attorney.
I, I would concur with Angus's observation there. I mean, I think there are a lot of issues that, given a, a firm with a depth of experience in these issues are, are able to, you know, make decisions without consulting counsel every single time. We, we've just passed on a recommendation to, to the selectmen to, to pay almost $20,000 in legal fees that have been accrued on zoning issues in the past six months. I believe that an awful lot of those issues would not have or should not have gone to legal counsel if we've got a, a experienced and competent CEO in place. And that's what this organization offers. I mean, they're, they're not a small firm. This is an international firm with expertise in all aspects of land planning, building construction, management, et cetera. So there, there is a cadre of, of legal experience in there as well. So I don't think we can speak to a specific number, but I think that yes, some of that cost is going to be, would be offset by the more experienced CEO.
Board of Finance, we think we've got Alan in, in speaking, I'm assuming for the Planning and Zoning. He is recommending either that we set their budget for the CNA, CHA firm at about $44,000 for the remainder of the year that will require us to move from 17 to 44. Or he is offering a lower amount of hours, reduced hours is a better phrase, at about 30, which sort of maps on to last year's budget, but I feel like I'm Abbott and Costello here. 17 is what the town is currently authorized and that's what we're going to have to change. So the question is, do you feel comfortable enough to take the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning or do you feel more comfortable leaning with Angus? And I'm not sure it's yet a selectment's recommendation. But you feel we need more time? And if that is true, I'm going to suggest we use the 17 we have now and enter into a contract with this firm to, for the next two or three months to continue to provide the full services. Anyone? Any thoughts?
Are we still going to look for, for a? I, I have a problem with 44,000 for about eight hours of work, of work a week. You're talking about $240,000 a year, somewhere in that neighborhood. It, it seems like an awful lot of money to spend for a CEO. We, we're hoping to save some money over the 33,000 that we were paying up until some time ago. This is way over the, where I hope to be at 44. I, I, I'm bothered by this quite a bit and I, I don't know if anyone else is or not. That seems like a big number to me. It is a big number. There's no question about that. And that's, that is, that's one of the reasons why we landed with the zoning enforcement officer that, that replaced Kathy. Because the cost, I, I struggled with that cost. And I thought that we could, we would do fine with, with a, with a zoning enforcement officer who had some experience and had abilities, just didn't use them. That's, that's, that's history and that, oh, that's fine. But, but so my, my answer to your question is there is no one out there right now that, that is qualified for this role. Yes, we will continue to look and there are options out there. You know, we have neighboring communities that are, that, that will probably need to have a zoning enforcement officer soon. And I think we'll have much better luck advertising for a full-time zoning enforcement officer as opposed to a part-time. And if we can combine with another town, I think we'll find, we'll find we get more qualified applicants. But for this, for this role, we are unable to find anyone right now who is, who wants to apply for this job. It, it is a very, very important job for this town as our town. Are we asking too much of, of applicants? Are we asking, you know, for, for planning when we don't need planning? Shouldn't we be asking for just the CEO? Can we, can we kick back a little bit? No, we're not, we're not advertising for a planner. We're advertising for a zoning enforcement officer. With this particular firm, we have planning abilities. And I got to tell you, Russ, I think that a community like Deep River right now needs some planning advice. You know, we've made tremendous progress that you've been a part of and, and most of the folks sitting around this table have been a part of over the last 20 years, you know, from, from night, well, let's even go a little further back, but the last 20 years, we've seen some tremendous changes in this town that have moved the town forward. There's, there's a, there's a real dichotomy of, of interest in this community, at least expressed right now, that some folks want to see no more change and some folks want to see all kinds of change. And we need to have a planning, a plan in place. And, and this is a good firm to help us do that. It's a good firm to help us respond to questions when someone comes in with something that might be a little bit different. It's a good firm to help us move forward to where we can find a zoning enforcement officer. I, I, I don't, I can't, I can't hide my own interest in just having a, a zoning enforcement officer up there. These folks are going to help us get to that, whether it's through training someone who doesn't have all the qualifications or some other, some other way. But they are going to going, they're going to get us. They're going to move us forward and, and they're going to fill a role that we need to. What are we paying the firm per month right now? Right now, well. On a month-to-month? On a month-to-month, their, their proposal in front of us right now is $4,000 a month. And that is, you know, that covers the office hours, time outside of the office where they're corresponding with us and doing work and meetings. That's an average of about 10 hours a week. What, what are we paying them or what have we been paying them in the last? Paid them more than that. We, we paid them 80, for seven weeks, we paid them 8250. So, you know, I'm trying to, the, the, one of the reasons I wanted to continue to negotiate, not to lock in right yet, is because I'd like, I think we can, we can cut that back from 10 hours a week to, to eight hours a week or something like that. And we still have the coverage that we need and that we, and that we already are getting. But I, I just want to continue negotiating with them. I don't think it's going to, it's not going to come in less than 40,000. I can guarantee you that. They're a professional firm and this is professional services. They're lower than if I was, if I was charging for this role, I would be charging more than that.
I, I think one of the mistakes that's being made is, is equating the level of service with the number of hours being provided. Because I thi, I think we need to look at it in terms of the level of experience and expertise that's being provided. In which case CHA is offering a very broad staff with very extensive experience. And the argument we made previously, which we still stand by is that somebody with that experience is going to be able to get the same result in a fraction of the time of somebody who has not had that experience. As well as the fact that somebody with that experience is not going to step into the same legal issues as somebody who has not encountered those issues. So we, we actually have a, they're actually an international firm with very extensive resources. We're, we're, we're paying for their expertise and their knowledge and their efficiency. I agree with, with Angus that there, there can be ways in which to reduce that cost. It's my belief that we reduce that cost by altering the way we do business. And they've already brought some of that to to fruition and we're, we're doing a lot more online. And we're, we're doing a lot more online, um, that doesn't require the contact time. If we were to utilize a paraprofessional in the office to screen applications or provide information, we could pay somebody at administrative assistant, um, rate, and then retain the monies to pay these professionals for their, uh, for, when that experience is necessary. It's a change to culture, and I, and I, I understand the concern and trepidation there and the perception that if we don't have somebody in the office eight hours a week, that we're not providing, providing the same level of service. But as, um, C H A has pointed out in their proposal, they're available five days a week. They're available by email and phone calls, um, to the, to the town office, to the, uh, commissioners, as well as to residents. And if we move to a direction of, uh, somebody scheduling their time such that they don't need chair time, that they have professional service time, I think we could easily, uh, work towards a scenario where we're getting much better service and at a commensurate rate with where we've been before. It's how the industry is working now. If Deep River is not ready to make that change yet to, you know, a, a person in a chair, I can understand that, but it's gonna cost.
I understand, Alan, that they're good. I understand they're great. I understand we need that level of expertise. That's, that's all well and good. What, what I can't get by is two and a half times what our budget is.
Well, the budget.
Well, remember, remember our budget. Our budget changed.
To the standard of a CEO, which we need.
Well, I, I don't, I don't agree with.
And I don't want to go down the path of comparing it to what you accepted. That was not a number that was floated by the Planning and Zoning Commission as to what the needs of that, uh, position are. It was a number that was accepted because it was floated out there. Now we're not in a position to retain the expertise that we require for the number that has been budgeted.
I wanna, I wanna address that in a different way, Russ. When, when we prepared this budget, when, when we began preparing this budget, we had a zoning enforcement officer in place who was hired by the Planning and Zoning Commission and by us, by the Board of Selectmen, um, to fill that role based on her qualifications. She was paid, uh, she was offered a contract, um, that, that was considerably less than what we were paying Kathy, but was, um, commensurate with other zoning enforcement officers in other towns around the state. And was, and was a, a cost that had been advised by the Association of Zoning Enforcement Officers. That was a, a, a good rate. We all started this budget process thinking that that's where we were, and we were overjoyed. We're saving, we're saving a bunch of money. This is gonna be great, and we're still getting good service. Well, that didn't work out. She, she decided she did not want to work here and, and moved on. We learned that while we were already into the budget making, well into the budget making process, and we did not want to make a change to that at that point. But we discussed at length that we would make a change once we found someone. We have found someone, um, that they're more expensive than I would like, but they are, I think we will find value in that expense, and we will benefit from it. Whether we go, I don't, I don't agree with Alan in his, uh, in how he thinks that offices are working. And in his experience, that may be the case. My experience is a little bit different, but the whole world right now is working remotely, so we can take advantage of that. There, there are lots of ways that we can move this forward. And I'm asking, I'm not asking anything right now. I'm, I'm, we have the ability to continue with them for, for a given number of times, because we've got that money in there. I don't see us having an alternative, and I think that we can benefit from this. I want to continue to negotiate, and maybe that does come back to where they work remotely one day. I don't know. And if we can get it low, we can get below 40, we'll work for that. Um, and we'll work together with the Planning and Zoning Commission to bring back a number two. But right now, there is no one who has applied who can fill this role. Not the role that they're, that they're gonna fill. They're gonna, they're gonna fill a, a good role, a better role. But no one has applied that can fill the role, forget about Kathy, that can fill the role that Julie has done. We just don't have those people that have applied. And we've been advertising for, for six weeks. I don't want to continue advertising. We will continue sending dealers out, but it's costing us 300 bucks a month to advertise.
Is there an alternate way to advertise it? Could you use some sort of search?
I, I would guess so. You know, indeed called me today and said, why don't you hire a headhunter? That's thousands of dollars, you know? And, and for, for, for a part-time job, you know, uh, I, I don't think we're gonna find anyone. We will continue to look. But I do believe that we will benefit as a town from these folks being here, whether they're here for another four months, or they're here for another two months, or they're here for another two years, or they're here forever. The town will benefit from them, and we need to have that office full. We, um, you know, we're gonna spend the money on legal fees. We're gonna spend the money on, on a, a lot of, a myriad of other, other, um, other expenses that we will save by having them in place, at least for now. The continuity is important. The cost is, the cost is more than anyone here is comfortable with. Planning and zoning, um, worked to, to reduce that cost, but the, the result was not something that I'm, I'm able to support right now. We may, we may end up there, but right now I don't, I'm not comfortable with.
Well, just, just simple math. You know, if you're paying $4,000 a month, that's $48,000 a year. They're proposing 44,000 for a year, so.
Nope, nope. They're proposing 44 for the rest of this year.
Oh, the rest of this year, okay. All right, all right.
All right, Board of Finance, we have to, we can keep asking questions, but eventually we have to either decide, are we going to go with a permanent change in the budget? Or should we take a smaller step, authorize Angus and Alan to use the 17,000 in this budget to enter into contracts with the C H A for the next one or two months? And we'll revisit this in the future. Anyone have any thoughts?
I'd like to revisit in the future. I agree.
I don't think we have a choice. We have C H A, which are a very good firm. We have no choice if we're gonna continue to provide the services they provide. So it is revisit it in the future and give Angus and Alan the ability to negotiate with these folks, hopefully on a permanent basis, but certainly over the next couple of months.
Yes, I wanna, I wanna say this. I don't believe that in any way is this ticking the can down the road or anything. We are, we have a good firm. We're gonna try to continue with that firm. We're just trying to negotiate a cost that is more palatable to all of us here.
All good. Uh, I do not think there's a need for a vote here unless anyone would like one. We all acknowledge where we're going. We will revisit this in the future, but we will begin to call upon this year's budget to contract with C H A to continue to provide their, their services.
Do you need a motion to do that, to change that?
I don't think so, unless the board would like to vote on it. If we all sort of recognize what we're doing here, I think we're okay, unless anyone disagrees. We're going to have to revisit that budget permanently sometime in the future. Obviously, 17 is not enough, so we will address all these in the future.
Yeah, and there will be a vote at that point, because it has to be. But right now, you're, I agree with you.
All right, well, okay.
I'm not in favor of using past. I'd like to keep it into this budget. Let's keep the budget and the auditing system clean.
Yes.
Um, and when we do that transfer, let's do one transfer, but let's closely monitor how much is actually being spent and where we are in the search process, or in their ability to find someone that can fill the position locally at a palatable rate. That 44 for just the end of this year is.
Forty.
Too much.
Okay, forty. What, uh, when you say transfer, I agree with everything you're saying. I think I'm nodding here. What is the transfer you're referring to?
Well, I don't want to encum, we had leftover from last.
We're not asking to do that.
We're not asking for that.
Yeah, I don't want to.
We just did that in July.
Right, this is, you know, from July 1, we know that we're going to have to transfer funds, or transfer at the end of the year funds to cover this cost. We're gonna have to go to a town meeting because it's going to have to be transferred, and it will be over the 10,000.
Well, okay, I mean, I think it's important, it's what you're trying to make. We encumbered, we took funds from last year and entered into a contract with them in July. We're closing that down. We have a budget of 17. We will spend part of that 17 to contract with C H A, uh, for the next couple of months, so. I, I, I just don't comfort whether we're transferred, but I think we're all fine. We'll clean it up when we get, everyone agrees, when Alan and Angus and the selectmen agree on this is the amount of hours and how we wish to run planning and zoning, and the cost, we will have to adjust that budget.
Right.
Uh, we'll have to. I mean, we will find on whether we agree to. So yes. All right. I think it is done. Uh, Alan, uh, are you out, you're out there. Thank you for your time, as always, and, um, is that a fan that you have?
It's, it's a fan that I have.
That's very.
Unair-conditioned space.
Well, that's one of the advantages of an old house, you use fans.
Thanks, thank you. I think we're moving in the right direction, but, uh, obviously we still have some work.
And I do, but take comfort, we're in the right direction, and we should all leave with that, uh, concept.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Appreciate it, everyone. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is a recommendation of selectmen. Uh, I don't think you have any other than you will in the future have some, right Angus? Do you have anything you want to recommend?
I don't have anything, no, let's, let's keep moving.
Keep on going. All right, Angus, do you have, do you think you have the ability to bring the budget up there?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Cool. Let's look at expenses, obviously.
You sent me two expenses.
I did?
I'm not sure which you would like to have.
I only sent you one. Laurie sent you.
I sent you all four.
There were four emails.
No, I wanna, I only want to spend time tonight on the, uh, last year's budget, June 30 of last year.
All right, well.
Unless anyone wants to, but it seems we were way too premature. 6:30, the one up above, one up above. All right, um, let's, uh, anyone can speak here. This is a free-for-all. I do wish to point out to you that the selectmen's budget in this month, as of June 30, it has gone over. We can pick away at, uh, there are salaries that are driving it over. And I'm gonna have Angus decide how much he wants to talk about legal fee notices.
I don't know, since housing assignment.
Well, I don't know who that is. I'm certainly happy to address that. I'm just, my screen is dominated by your faces right now, which is me. But let me get here.
What is that?
Yes, you'll see that the legal fees notices is, is over by $20,333.27. We, um,
After the year.
We just, uh, just received a bill, and I've got a phone call into the Planning and Zoning Commission's attorney. It's how in the world they could send us one bill in July for the fiscal year, uh, 1920. But that's where we are. That, that bill was generated mostly by, um, concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, uh, the, the zoning enforcement officer that was here before, um, Julie, or the, yeah, Julie, sent, sent a lot of questions up to them, sent a lot of things that Kathy used to handle on her own. There was also a commission that had no confidence in, uh, in the interim zoning enforcement officer after Julie left, and they drove, uh, they drove that cost high. And hopefully we've gotten that under control. But, you know, we didn't know we were, we didn't, we knew we were close because of the rest of the budget, but they, they just about doubled the whole budget for planning out loud. And that, I think some of you folks who have been around longer than I have can, can address whether that is a, used to be a common thing or not, but it certainly was something that was disconcerting to me to see that bill come, come back. And, uh, and we're trying to address it. But it was, those were fees that were, uh, were, were, you know, services that were rendered, and we benefited from them.
All right.
I'm gonna ask you a question also about a couch manager over by almost $8,000 in overtime. Are you monitoring overtime, and is that all legit stuff?
Yes, it is, and I am. I wanna, I don't, again, I can't see that, so let me see. Couch manager, yeah, yep. Yes, we are watching that. She has been putting in overtime, mostly as a result of the fact that she does not have an assistant. So she's been doing, doing that work.
Did, did, did Kathy have an assistant at one point?
Yes, she did. You can see it right underneath that count, couch manager's assistant. And we are advertising for that role to be filled as well.
Yeah, okay. I got you. Thank you.
All right, so that, basically, it's the legal fees that drive it so far over. So the selectmen is over, that's new for us. Let's see, anyone else have key things, or small numbers that have changed along the way? You'll see, register, registrar salary is over slightly also. I'm not surprised, but nevertheless, they are over. Okay.
Town hall telephone, is it telephone line? Yeah, the telephone line is over by almost 3,000. Town hall operations.
Yep, yep, I see it.
5304.
Yep. Um, that's probably has to do with cell phones and, and the, the amount of Zoom calls that we've been having due to.
Zoom call makes a lot of sense, correct? Um, take note, folks, that the town hall repairs, Angus and I chatted about this this morning. We had a budget of 50, we spent 31, giving us $18,000 unspent.
No, it's really fun, so let's. I hear a ring.
What, Bill?
Did Bill have a question?
No, he was talking to somebody else.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Ah, okay. Cool. All right, uh, keep it going down. And here's the town clerk. Let us take a glance at the town clerk. You can see that, uh, assistant is over by 2,600, and, uh, you will, uh, keep on going down there. You'll see that, uh, I think my number, 5,000, yeah, about 4,500, is that, is that right? Am I in the right?
Okay, so that's more than the 2,000 annual.
Um, well, I get it, because in theory Angus and Amy just mismatched on the additional two hours. So I'm assuming that that, that number is a reflection of divided by two. That is my math. Nothing worked, I got it. All right, it may be a little over, too.
I'll come back with, I'll get you some real numbers on what each hour is when we come back with our, with our.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
And you can see town clerk, there's a savings of about 5,500, which is interesting. If Amy was so certain that she saved 8,500, we've eaten up some of that in other places. Well, I guess in the, uh, the assistant.
And the over, yeah.
Yes, correct.
Indexing.
Yes.
Have we lost Amy? Is she not here?
I think we lost Amy, I think.
Yeah, Amy left a while ago.
I think planning and zoning wore her out.
Almost wore me out.
The good news, we'll get to do it again. Since we, since we are the Board of Finance, I want you to look at our budget, which is a bit mysterious to me, but nevertheless, we only have three items, actually, since, uh, Laurie is the first one. Let's look at the latter two. We have not paid our auditors yet. And that's, that mystifies me. Anyhow, that's what the financial says. I asked Kathy today. And the printing expenses, I always thought, and Angus agreed with, I always thought that printing expenses was to do an annual report, and we never spent it. But, um, all the advertising we do for town meetings, at least associated with us, comes out of that line item. So, um, anyhow, uh, if we do pay the auditors, I'm not expecting any money coming out of that. I checked, we will have no surplus. Let's go to assessor, and I'm gonna hand this one over to Angus, uh, because it is mysterious. It was explained to he and I today, and hopefully he understood it, I don't. The assessor is, has been overpaid by $4,186. And Angus, do you want to take a shot at this one? I could, I can't. Angus, do you want to take a shot at this one? I could, I can't do it.
Not particularly, but here we go. Once again, we had a, you know, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how this happened, and we didn't see it until after the year was, was over and the money went over. But our assessor had some vacation time that she was taking while while at work. And I don't know, we're gonna, we're gonna get to the bottom of how in the world that got to there, but Kathy and I had a good conversation about it today, and we'll have a better explanation for you next month. Somehow or another, vacation, she was getting paid the vacation time at the same time she was getting paid the days. I understand.
Are there rules in place about things like this?
I, I want to say there probably is law in place about something like this. We'll, we'll look into it. We really just discovered it after the fiscal year was over. And had a good conversation. It was explained to me once before, and I did not get a, get a real understanding of it until today when Kathy came down and spoke to both Bud and I. I understand better what happened. I don't know how it happened. We'll get to the bottom of it.
Is a bit mysterious. All right, keep taking us down. Tax collector is, we're fine, we should generate a surplus there. Special services, I think we're good with special. Anybody have questions on special services? Note that the contingency, we had a contingency of 12, we've used five, so it leaves about six, but it is good to have contingencies.
Yeah, BSM, BMSI computer, isn't that a contract? Was the contract amount more than we expected?
No, that's also computer support.
Okay, technical support, and we've only used a little bit of technical support, setting up Zoom and everything else.
Yep.
All right.
All right.
How much, how much was Kathy being paid? I, I can't remember. I was trying to quickly look it up and I just couldn't do three things at once here. How much was Kathy, Kathy's annual salary?
Kathy Jefferson or Kathy who?
Uh, Jefferson.
Kathy Jefferson was in the vicinity of 33,000.
Yeah, that's the number I have, 33,000.
That's more.
No, she also had a stipend that she was being paid. And I think she was also getting paid mileage over.
33 inclusive of the stipend and the mileage or?
Beg your pardon?
Was the 33,000, did that include the stipend and the mileage?
That was additional cost.
Which is interesting, if you use last year, Kathy probably cost us, what, 33, 34, close to 35,000. So if we move to 44, it's not as big a number as going to 17, but seems to me we ought to put last year's budget to rest and stop talking.
No, absolutely, yeah.
We stopped talking about it as we're not increasing beyond that. So it just confuses the issue. All right. Let's keep it, let's keep it going down. So special services, keep her going down, Angus.
Okay, building official was way over.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of that is actually, we're gonna get reimbursed on some of that for COVID-related stuff. But not all of it. I, again, if you remember, he has gone way over every year, and we've had, tried to get him closer and closer. He's closer this year than he was in the past couple of years. But some of, some of that money we will get reimbursed. Some of it we will not.
Good.
Needed better handle on that one.
Yep. It's gotten better. It's gotten better, that's all I can say.
Yep.
And if you look at inland wetlands, we always have the issue with, with the inland wetlands officer, he does not put in his time. Angus and I think there's gonna be some savings there, but half of it is what I've assumed, so, for surplus. Keep taking her down and okay. Look at employee benefits, just for fun, is it still there? Oh, I'm sorry, building inspector, insurance, employee benefits. Isn't it interesting that we have a surplus in the health insurance of $38,000? I don't know what the more to do, other than say it's interesting, so that's.
And that unemployment is only over by 1,000?
Well, yeah, because we spent 1,001. Remember, we have a placeholder of 100. We do have folks, the unemployment equation of how things are allocated to employer is way beyond me. There are people who probably haven't worked for us for a couple of years that are in that number, but yes.
We also had, we had people from the library who were laid off. And we are, we are negotiating with the State Department of Labor right now, because we have a couple of employees, part-time employees, who had other full-time jobs that were laid off from those full-time jobs that are still working for us. Somehow or another, we're paying for those, so we're.
Part of that, that's correct. It's an odd algorithm. If you notice there, the salary contingency and accrued benefits, it is over budget, that's not correct. In Angus and I tried to get April, I assume, remember, we have payment to Ray, we increased that number, so the budget has not caught up with the actual, what it should be. We adjusted that number, so it's not really over. Let's go to police protection. You, if you remember, we have talked all year that the resident state trooper amount of, what do we budget, 184, 185? We, it was too high. That was not actually what they charged us. I believe that number is about right, the 48.3 is what we will save. We incurred increases in other lines. And if you drop it down, you'll see that we, we are under budget there. If you can sneak down, okay, a little bit, okay. Did we make, is that 37? Yeah, police, but now remember, police is, the budget says we're over budget by 37. That's because we had to pay out 65 for a special funded. If you look at revenue, I think we collected 70 or 80. We could, we could collect it substantially more, and that is good. Fire department is over budget, basically driven by vehicle maintenance. And I wish everyone to pay attention to have a smile on their face. Remember when Jimmy Buddy says, oh, we don't do water maintenance anymore? Budget, they're doing water maintenance, water hole maintenance now. So anyhow, they're a little over budget.
Oh, they actually spent it on?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. We actually talked very, had a good heart-to-heart about that.
Okay, that's great.
All right, keep it going. All right, let's take her down, as they say in the.
Okay, hold on, their incentive program?
Yes.
Hold on, go back, the fire part, firemen's incentive program. Now, that's the amount that the actuary tells us we have to put in?
That's correct.
And that's over, we're over on that, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm gonna check that. I don't, I don't know how that could happen. That's
Actually, I didn't focus on it too. That surprises me. I thought we were under there, so. Okay, yeah, let's check on that. I didn't catch that one. Very good, Laurie. Okay, take her down, Angus. Take her down.
Deputy marshal is over by a dollar. Fire them.
Oh, that is correct.
Dollar.
Sort of fascinating that we actually budgeted 524, so, yes, okay. Highway department remains under budget.
Wait a minute, go back, go back.
Yes.
Communication center. If we're contracted with them, how are they over by 600, 700?
And I'll look into it.
I think we, that's been true for quite a while. I think we budgeted the wrong number, but yeah.
Yeah, maybe. What we have.
Yeah.
I'm assuming.
I think it's an allocation of their cost, but yes.
Okay. I'm assuming civil prep is over because of COVID. Are they charging us more? I thought that was.
That's gonna be, no, no, there's, there is no one to charge us more. That's, that's just expenditures that we are using on civil preparedness. And that, that's all COVID-driven. It's just buying PPEs and things like that.
Okay.
We put it in civil preparedness because it's a good place for us to be able to keep track of it when it comes time to go for reimbursements.
Right, no, that's, sounds appropriate.
Okay, highway department. Right now, we've got, we're under budget. Angus, are you gonna spend that 33, 33.3, I assume, aren't you? So we're going to encumber those funds.
You see, part of that's spent out on Kelsey Hill already.
Cool, spent already. All right, and so that is one of our new tools of encumbering, folks. So, all right, take her down, please.
Fire hydrant services are over?
They increase their, they increase, those guys increased their rates in the middle of the year. They do budgeting different than how we do.
Okay. And I know I sent you the question concerning bulky waste chipping, that that had a big jump
Yeah.
last month to this month?
Yes.
That was, yes, it did. That was just a bunch of bills that came in. Bulky waste was way, way up this year, and we knew that was gonna happen. And then we also had a spring chipping bill came in.
Who's chatting? Thank you.
I don't know, but who's, where do you want to go?
But as, I assume as people stay home with the pandemic, they do their clearing of their back 40, and they send it up to the dump.
Oh, that's what I, I think that's what drove that in the spring, was we just got out.
People didn't know what to do, so they chop stuff in their backyard.
Backyards, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, okay, cool. All right, anybody got any stops they want to do along the way? I suggest the next one of interest is park and rec.
Well, library salary, librarian salary, she's also over?
She's also what?
Librarian salary.
Is over by $18, yes. You wonder why, don't you?
I mean, salary is salary.
Well, is she salary, is she salary, salary, or she, she must be salary. Yeah, why do we pay somebody $18 more? Do we not know? There's lots of mysteries. Yes. And speaking of park and rec, always sort of a confusing item, but they're under budget by $11,600. But note that the park and rec director, who has a salary put in, was explained to Angus and I today, put in for mileage for the year, which is why she is now over budget.
She's paid miles?
She has been historically, when we switched her over to salary, nobody informed me of that, so.
Yeah, I was taken aback as well. Seems like an odd place to put reimbursement in a.
I don't know what that was all about, but.
Yeah, cool. All right, keep her going. Let's go, keep on going down there, Angus, we're there. All right.
Maintenance of all facilities is over? Is that all because of cleaning?
Where are you?
I'm still in park and rec. Is that all part of cleaning that they're over?
Well, I'll, I'll look into that. I don't know why that, why that's over. More likely because we had to do some work on some of the, on the sprinkler systems and things like that.
I didn't catch that one either. Okay. Okay, take her down, keep on going. Elementary school, I assume that the school is going to come in on budget, so while currently they have a surplus, I am not anticipating that continuing. Sort of odd, isn't it? As we sit in July, you would have thought they would have called down all their money. And Angus, that is also, also true for the maintenance, the 40,000, while there's 21.9 left, you have spent that or committed that number?
We will find that there is some money left on that. There was a the work that we just did over there on their air conditioning, where the main office is in the, in the building, was paid twice, once by us and once by them. So we're gonna have some money left over there, that will just come back into our budget.
Excellent. All right, let's take it down to a general fund capital. Shot past. Fire department, that, the, the fire department stations, while we've only spent 7,000, we've got 27 left. We will encumber that, that is going to be spent, it's probably already, already, work is being done, so that one number will not be left.
What work are they doing?
That's the washer and dryer that we bought from.
Okay, sorry, yep.
Sure surprising it took too long to pay for it, but if you remember, we increased the revow pre-funding to $60,000, so a few dollars left certainly will, they will be used. And the, the fire truck, we did not spend, so obviously that will not be spent. And the architect for the fire department, some of that will be spent, most, some of it will be left, so we don't really have a good count on that yet. Is that a good phrase, Angus?
Yes, that's, it's pretty, it's pretty much going to be in there. There might, I'll be talking to him, asking what he's got left over for us, but that project just, you know, we're making good progress. Jimmy was working with the firemen on that, and it's kind of stalled after COVID hit, and hopefully we can get it going back again.
All right, cool. My estimate is that we will be, and as we talk, we have some numbers in play, but I think we're gonna be about $350,000 below budget for our expenditures, so. But to be determined, that's a good number. And our revenues are running a little bit higher, so I think we're, we will have a 400, $500,000 surplus, is my current estimate, so that is good. All right, anyone, anyone have additional questions on the old budget? I'm suggesting the new budget is not worthy of our attention, since we have very little time and it's the last item I have, are we going to meet next month in August? It is usually our vacation month. So I suggest we take it unless there is an emergency. Anyone wish to meet next month?
The only two reasons that I can think that we would call you guys in, one would be the planning and zoning, but I'm not sure we're really going to need to do that, and and the other would be if we find that our tax revenue drops off the table.
Correct. That latter one is the one that's most important. I think planning and zoning can wait. So.
Yeah, it's, it's the tax anticipation note that, you know, I'm still very concerned with the fact that if we decide, okay, wait a minute, we, everybody has slowed down, they're not paying the rest of it like they normally would. All the other towns are in the same boat and wanting to get the money. Are we still going to be able to get our funds?
We are still maintaining our relationship with Dine Bank. They're aware that we're where we are, and they're holding our place in mind.
All right, does anyone else have any issue they wish you discuss with the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen?
Oh, Angus, by the way, they did a good job on Kelsey Hill Road, and I did not complain.
You ain't seen nothing yet. You got more coming later next week. Actually, no, I think Thursday. Thursday, you'll see, they're gonna put some oil down on it and, and stone, and then, and then a week, probably three weeks after that, they're gonna come by and fill all the cracks.
Oh, oil and stone, just to screw my car up. I knew you'd find it some way to do it.
Yeah, well, I wanted to give you something. I had to give you something, Bill.
We have to meet, we're gonna have to meet in August, so Bill can complain officially now.
I don't think we'll go that far.
All right, everyone, I will, isn't there a song, "I'll See You in September"? But unless there is emergency, and we'll chat by emails in between, folks, so thank you very much. This was a tough meeting. Hope everyone who participates agrees, so thank you.
Any chance we can start doing this in person, maybe? I know you're working on it, trying to figure out
We're working on that.
continue doing.
We are working on that. The technology is a little bit cumbersome. We, we have the authority, you know, the guidance tells us that we can do in-person meetings, we just have to do them as a hybrid. We have to still provide the, the remote availability to folks that either don't want to or can't come into the meetings. So we're gonna work towards that, and I would like very much, I'd like to actually try it with our next selectmen's meeting, but we'll see if we can get it there. Certainly by September, if Connecticut stays in as good shape as we are, we will be able to do that for, for our meeting together. But, you know, probably be upstairs, probably spread out a little bit. But we will, we'll try. I certainly want to. I really miss seeing everybody. It's a much better meeting when we're sitting across from the table. Um, but, uh, we'll see, you know, there's another five states on the banned list from Connecticut right now. So I think we're up at 35 or 37 states, so.
That is correct.
Now, while I know that numbers at your meetings, cause I've been able to attend a lot of the selectmen meetings, um, granted you still only have a few of us showing up, but it's a few more than you normally have. It's greatly appreciated having those, the ability to zoom in to a meeting and not have to physically appear. Um, to the meetings that I have to be at, I show up physically, but it's nice to have the Zoom to be able to just sit back and listen to what you guys are discussing this way.
Yep. Yep, I think it's, uh, you know, it, it allows for more public, um, attendance, that's for sure. And at the same time, it also allows for more public participation. That's what, that's what democracy is all about. It's, I think it's here to stay and that's why I'm, I'm, uh, looking forward to using some of that steep money to get the auditorium set up so we can do this on a regular basis, easily.
Cool.
Uh, much less cumbersome.
Yeah.
All right, everyone. According to Angus, democracy is here to stay. So, uh, that is a good note upon which to end our meeting. What's that you? All those in favor of a journey, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, randomly, uh, Russ, do you wanna make the motion? Bill, do you want a second? Carmella, do you want, who wants to make the motion? Who wants to say? Thank you, Bill. Bill, who wants to second?
I got it.
Carmella, you got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Just make it official.
Bye, everyone. I'm closing this down.
Good night.
Nice August, everybody.
Enjoy your summer.
Yeah.